I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, thank you. Our next item will be public comment. And I'll check and see if there's anybody that has public comment. If so, then I'll go over the rules. Otherwise, I won't. Is there anybody in the room that wants to make a public comment? Well, is there anybody on Zoom that wants to make a public comment? Raise your hand.
Don't see anybody raising.
Don't see any. Okay. Next we'll go to open agendas. Any items that the commissioners want to add to the agenda there?
I don't.
We have our concern agenda, you know, to some more so. You know, on both on back.
So, wanna um pull out B and ask a question on it?
Okay. All right, and let's take B out. We'll put that as our first item in business. So. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So that'll be.
Second.
The move to second at all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The nation carried.
So, on this, when I was looking at it, number three, time of performance, and it's just kind of a curiosity question. But it says begin date September one twenty twenty four, which I understand. And to be included as of end date July thirty nine twenty twenty eight. That's just kind of. Why it wouldn't be like August thirtieth, you know, a full year or at the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth, you know, just July thirty one just seemed like an a date, you know, normal dates for the county, so.
Mm hmm. Um. And. Correct me if I'm uh. This is for like an on-call consultant. We could, we could easily adjust that to be uh uh to coincide with our fiscal year, so we know what we're budgeting. So uh that would be an easy alteration if you'd like to amend on that.
To me, that seems probably makes sense to have it coincide with our fiscal year.
Okay.
And especially like you said, budgeting rates.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're budgeting for one month of service in that fiscal year.
Yeah, that would be an easy alteration if the commissioner would like to amend that on there.
So I would uh for approval on contract with the um Lancaster Mobley with the change of the end date being June thirtieth twenty twenty eight.
Second.
There were second and further discussions.
Uh would you like to maintain Chair Sykes doing it, or since we're modifying this, I mean Chair Sykes is at the at the office quite a bit, but.
Yeah.
Okay, fine, alright.
Authorizing Chair Sykes to sign.
Quite a bit.
That's how it's set up right now, so.
Drop by occasionally. Okay, so uh all uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nation carried.
And what we'll do is we'll have that changed, we'll have them sign, and then we'll bring it to you for seating chair.
Okay, uh next up will be our business items, B five A about the natural hazard mitigation plan, timer.
Good one. Apologies that you had, apologies to Valerie, I already sent him that it's such a long document. We've been working um for almost two years on our natural hazard mitigation plan. Um Stephen was gonna join in uh because I'm not gonna take the credit for this because it really is um a tag team of myself and Stephen and the previous emergency manager who took it over and was the lead for a year or so. Anyway, um you are probably aware, I think I included that in the cover memo, that a a jurisdiction city or county is required to have an updated has natural hazard mitigation plan every five years. If we don't, then we don't qualify for disaster relief funds, which is important and you need them for fire, flood, or other earthquake, other events. Um we through a grant um had the state agency primarily Department of Land Conservation and Development um do the substantive writing piece, so Stephen and I did the outreach with the cities, and you can see in this plan, there's an addendum for each of the cities to adopt. Um it's an update, so we did not have to start from scratch. Um is Stephen on the line? You wanna add anything? I don't see him. So once the board approves this, then we'll send out a note to the cities so that they can co-adopt and that they as standalone entities um also follow the hazard mitigation plan. And there was a late addition to your packet. Um FEMA is ready to approve it, which is rocket lightning speed, it seems. Um it was approved by Oregon Emergency Management and then um they forwarded to FEMA for their review and approval. Um it's been a minute since I read this plan, but if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer. I mean, that's all I have.
So I had a question, so so some I did notice some of the city managers were not updated.
Okay.
Um. So City of Boorman, that's City of Heffner.
Um and that's, those are probably the committees that started.
Yeah, I I assumed that was the case, and then there was also something on table eight that caught my eye.
Okay.
It's got to find it here, sorry.
Table eight, table eight or figure eight? Table eight?
Table eight.
Okay. Twenty five?
Yes.
Okay.
So I just, I'm just looking at the percentages here, and I was a little confused with the total population and then done by race, and some of the second lines seemed odd to me. And I'm just, I'm not sure that I understand what it is all about. But it shows that we are seventy percent, seventy percent black or African American um with only eighty-one in the incorporated and zero in the unincorporated. That number didn't jive with me.
That is not correct.
Yeah, it shows eight thousand four hundred ninety-two number of of uh black or African Americans in Marl County.
Yeah, I think um that's right. I, that was probably a cut and paste um from the US Census Bureau, and maybe in that translation a line got left out because you can also see it's a little bit askew between that term number and percent.
Yes, alright, very askew.
Yeah.
That's what caught my.
That's a really good detailed catch, okay. Um we can have that corrected and um any other corrections you want to have.
Yeah, that was, those are the only two things that that I caught was.
Okay.
So I'm looking at the resolution on page two of the resolution and point one of our packet. And so whereas, the last whereas, the second line, it says the Benton County's commitment.
Mm hmm. Ah, that's another cut and paste. My apologies.
So then page seventy-one of our packet.
Hmm.
I'll tell you, it's table twenty. Um. We talk about Columbia Ethanol. Is it um? I always thought I knew it as Pacific Ethanol. And it talks about biodiesel production. I thought that they did ethanol production. But I could be mistaken. Yeah, biodiesel, ZACAM. Yeah, and they're not anymore. And that's correct, they are no longer there. They do owe some taxes. So it's page forty-three of the report, timer. Sorry. Down that page.
Okay, so. They're not in operation anymore?
Well, Columbia Ethanol, I don't believe is the proper name.
Right.
You might wanna check that, but I believe it's specific ethanol, they make ethanol, they don't make biodiesel.
Okay.
Yep. We can go check that.
Okay.
And going by, and going by the acreage, it is definitely Pacific Ethanol, because ZACAM isn't even close to twenty-five acres.
No, it's not.
Right.
Okay. And it's, it is Columbia. It's not, what are you?
It's Pacific Ethanol.
Okay. Did they change names, or is that?
As long as I, as long as I work across the, from them, it's always Pacific Ethanol.
Okay, good.
The owner is listed as Pacific Ethanol on the table on the right-hand side, but I guess it's called Project Columbia Ethanol is on the page forty-three.
Oh, that's right.
And then the other issue is, I guess, is that a biodiesel production facility is not.
It's ethanol.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it does show the owners. I guess I need to pan over. So then page seventy-three, so it's page forty-five of the report. And we talk about Amazon Web Services and like the second paragraph, and it says these AWSs are housed in large windowless buildings. AWS, Amazon Web Services is a company name.
So um. Think they were. I'm, I'm not checking what, so on the second, on the first paragraph.
So on the very first paragraph, it calls out what AWS means, called Amazon Web Services.
Yes.
Amazon Web Services is a company name. And then the second paragraph, it says these AWSs are housed in. So we don't have multiple Amazon Web Service companies.
Yeah, it should be data centers, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
It says it in the first. Has the same thing in the first paragraph.
That's not.
The AWSs are clustered in Eastern Oregon.
Mm hmm.
But it should be data centers.
Yeah, instead of also called, that um that should be um. You know, we could actually remove the reference to the company name and just say.
Say data.
Yeah, I'm checking what you're saying. That's better, except on the previous list, we did list those specific company names. Um. Uh so we could just re, what if we said there are several data centers?
That'd be good.
Um owned by AWS located in Moore County and then remove in the second sentence the reference to AWS and then just say data centers. And then we could just say um remove the reference to Amazon also in the in the second paragraph and make it more generic, so it's data centers, okay. Because we will have a be another data center that might not be, yeah, although this doesn't look forward necessarily. It includes what was in place at this time. Okay.
So then and it may just be me and somebody else can disagree, obviously. Two paragraphs above where it says Amazon Data Centers, we're talking about the renewable energy in the company, it says Moore County is working to establish a legacy of sustainability, harnessing the wind, sun, and battery storage, sleep on a cleaner, greener, more vibrant community. I don't know how that relates to hazard mitigation, but also when I compare that to the verbiage when it talks about the data centers and um how they could um when these facilities are located in areas with chronic drought and the local colony also relies on water for agricultural needs. One is really rosy and one's kind of downbeat, in my opinion, in my reading of this.
I agree with you. I mean, some of the adjectives, I guess they're adjectives. The governments offer extremely valuable tax breaks. That's the best subjective call I've heard.
And then, you know, the extreme usage of water to cool these centers, well, they may use a lot of water, but they don't consume very much. Most of that water that they use is then repurposed as irrigation water, so. But. You know, it's not factually correct, besides, one is really rosy and one is really downbeat.
And the owner who wrote this, because you see it all through there.
And again, this is what grabbed my.
Yeah.
Somebody else disagrees, that's fine. It sounds like at least Chair Sykes.
No, I agree.
Okay, yes, I've got one reading and I and then.
Is that, is it also beginning on page forty-two? Then the renewable energy paragraph. Yeah, um honestly, yeah, we state folks read it, so that's going to be their more their perspective, but it is my responsibility to make sure it meets the intent.
So one of the things is, you know, these documents kind of live out there and I don't want to come back into bite us some point or beat us over the head with it, too. You understand?
Yeah, but you know, just in that one paragraph on page, whatever it is, you know, I mean, you read that and you go, holy cow, you know, these tremendous amounts of electricity, tremendous amounts of water, you know, this extremely valuable tax breaks, I mean, is that necessary in a report like this?
Seems to go a little overboard. So that's an anti.
Not the way planners usually write.
It isn't. I know, we're less colorful, aren't we? Um. So the, the point, I mean, I can certainly rewrite it, but the point is that um there's a little bit of overlap between a conversation or a plan for sustainability and for hazard mitigation, and that, that really lends itself more to a discussion about sustainability um rather than about hazard mitigation. I mean, they do use a lot of power, there's.
They do, but I don't know how that's hazard mitigation.
Um. Yeah, mu- much more about the sustainability uh plan, which Matt and I talked about yesterday. That, that'll be the next one coming. Um. So um. How do you want to proceed? Do, do you want um want me to come back and re-wordsmith that? You want to just remove the um the more subjective sentence, more subjective words in that description?
Bring it back, yeah.
Okay.
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 Not a problem.
I think we can do a quick, uh, quick review and just uh polish it up a little bit, those corrections.
I think you've heard our concerns.
Yes. Keep it subjective.
Okay. Oh, um. When we reload it, do you want the whole doc?
No.
Okay, got it. Okay, we can do that, and I'll just have it ready for you for your next meeting. I'm super impressed you guys really read for detail that, yeah. That's why I said it's been a minute since I've read this.
We have engaged commissioners.
And having, and having looked at it, I realize that this has been a long process. I mean, we did show that there were former uh city managers within, city managers, and then looking at Boardman and Heffner, realizing that the current city managers aren't really one of those places as well.
It does say former, yeah.
On some of them, but not on Boardman and Heffner. Or Heffner just shows the former and the interim, and neither one of those correct, because John is now the city manager, and he's not on there. And Brandon is now the board and city manager, and he is not on there. Not Karen Pedd, and it shows her as the city manager, which she hasn't been for over a year. Just over a year.
Okay. I'll just make the change to Boardman, because otherwise it doesn't necessarily list the current.
And I don't know how important it was, it was just something that I.
Yeah, no, it's a good, it's a good point.
Any, any other comments?
No, that's all I had.
I'll do the redacting and then bring it back next.
Yeah.
Um, next.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Okay, next up will be by B, consideration nominations for uh ambulance service advisory committee.
Yes, um. So as we, as we go through um and are getting our providers in place and have our uh ambulance service plan adopted, we do need to um formalize our AM, our ASA advisory committee. This committee uh per the ambulance service plan will be the ones who are monitoring on at least a quarterly basis reports from providers. They'll also be the ones who are the frontline reviewers of any issues, whether in responses or any kind of conflicts on on uh jurisdictional kind of things. And then um they also have the opportunity to review uh the, the ASAs and bring recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. Um just to let you know, one of the first ones that OHA has asked us to do is just review the response times in the, in the ambulance service plan. Uh our our shortest one is twenty minutes, which they feel like in some of the more densely populated should be uh constricted down to a little bit more, their quicker response on that. Uh so we're gonna have the, this committee help us uh work through that. Um the, the structure of it, we would have two specific uh representations from the county. Uh that is the Marl County Health Department uh Director.
So right.
We just interrupted real quick. So on Marl County Health Department, have we not changed that tomorrow counting public health? You know, because there's a lot of misconception of C H D that goes to the health district or the, and I'm, I'm pretty sure we changed that to public health to alleviate that miss. I, I will get that, yes. Uh I, I, I often still refer to them as Health Department and transpose the two, so yes, well, I'll get that uh fixed, but from, from within the county, our uh our Director of Public Health, Robin Kennedy, uh will be the Chair. And we will have a representative from nine-one-one dispatch representative, representative. Uh that's typically been Kirsten Bowles, but open uh based on the sheriff's designation there. Uh from the providers, I don't have the provider listed for a Marl County Health District at this time, since we don't have them under uh agreement. I let them know they're, they've been left off this list, but that's an anticipation of them signing an agreement very soon. Uh for Boardman Fire, it's uh their um their physician, um and I won't even try to say his last name, well, I will, George Apostopoulos. Um it's my best staff at it. Um and then when we have the other provider designated, they'll have, they'll have one there as well. Uh the hospitals, we have uh representation from there, it's the uh the head of nursing or designee. Uh we do have a change on that from Pioneer Memorial Hospital. Uh I was notified that that will be Paul Martin as the designee for Pioneer Memorial Hospital. He's the Director of EMS Services there, and from Good Shepherd Healthcare is Judy Gabriel. Uh and they've uh they've confirmed that. The, the remaining bulk, the um remaining five members are representatives from each of the fire districts as first responders. They're on the field and have knowledge of how the ambulances come in and actually can kind of give kind of a third-party report on how, how that, that goes down. And so this, these are the ones, the, the other ones are kind of designated by the organization. These are the ones that um it is, are appointed per your approval. Um and we did have one update on this for Heffner's uh representation. So from Aragon Rural Fire Protection District, uh Thomas Roberts, who's the interim chief there, uh Boardman Fire Rescue District, Tamara Beardsley, who is a responder there, she's previously worked with the uh with the county and, and with Boardman Police. Um Heffner Rural Fire District is Eric Chick, he's the Deputy Chief, has been very involved with the EMTs and uh the volunteer response. Um I own Rural Fire Protection District, Adam McCabe, um who's on their fire department, is also EMT certified. And Lexington Volunteer Fire Department, Josie Miles, um who's uh who's in business finance and such, and also has occasionally driven for Marl County Health District. Uh one of the things I asked is there's, there's representation on uh from people who were involved with both of our uh providers, the one we have contracted and one uh we potentially will have contracted very soon. Um. I just made sure that as I talked with them, they're able to come in and provide as, as much of an unbiased approach on, on looking at policy and, and review of these as they can. Um had, had talks with Josie and Tamara and uh reached out to Adam, I know Eric and Thomas uh Chief Roberts, and all of them were uh relayed that they felt comfortable in, in reviewing the facts and making decisions based on that and would like to uh be considered for those positions. So uh we would be uh waiting for uh for the final provider uh representative, once we get that agreement uh settled in. Uh the things um in the, in the document, we had uh particularly for the fire districts, representation based on a two-year term. And um I would like to, as we get these appointed, just touch base with them, see if any, you know, two of them would be willing to do a one-year term and the others on a two-year term. Uh that wouldn't preclude them from being renewed. Uh it just gives, you know, and sometimes it's good to have an easy way out if they're overtaxed and they know, I just gotta put in six more months or something like that uh with, if conditions change in their consideration. Uh so we're hoping to be able to uh kind of set that up, so there's a continual uh body and we don't have a full replacement of all our fire district representatives there. Um with that, um I would just open it up to other, any questions? We don't anticipate this being a, a major uh fiscal impact. We might, you know, provide a little bit for any advertising meetings and maybe uh some refreshments every once in a while at their meetings, but generally they'll be meeting once a quarter. Uh they can meet a little bit more, uh but um all of these people are interested, engaged, and willing to serve on this advisory committee. Of course, it is without compensation, we relay that to them. Um and we would present their names to the commission for, for consideration and hopefully appointment.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions?
Just kind of clarification, at least in my mind, so like the representatives. We're approving them, and then if something changed, or let's say, you know, Heffner at the time of their act of his made, they didn't have the representative, so we would have approved Heffner, and then when they came with the name, then we would have then approved that, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought.
You're just, so particularly on those five, uh those need to be approved, and you've noticed the other ones have or designee, so those organizations can swap, but these other five are specifically, you know who's representing from them, and you have to be a part of it. So, yeah, Eric, uh we got uh uh we got Heffners yesterday uh about four o'clock, so that's why it wasn't in the packet, sent out anything.
Not a problem, just clarification.
Definitely.
Any questions?
So I'll move to authorize the permission of the ASA Advisory Committee has discussed this specific approval of representatives from the fire, I have fire districts. It's outlined in the report.
I'll second.
We moved to the second and any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, next, uh. To consider, uh consideration of ASA assignment to Marl County Health District for Northeast and Southern ASAs. Once again.
So um we've been continuing the negotiations on um for the assignment of the um Southern and Northeast ASAs. Uh we have, well, we felt very uh pretty much a finalized agreement and I G A. Uh that was reviewed last Thursday, or actually last Friday, and uh changes were made and sent back to the health district. Um they've, after our special meeting that we had on Friday. Um they wanted to have our input before taking it to the board, and um unfortunately, they were not able to get a board meeting that until this, today at five-thirty. And so we, uh I'm hoping that as we, as they go into that meeting, that there'll be agreements approved and uh forwarded to the, to this body for, for final authorization and signature. And so we've attached the uh the latest copies of the uh ASA's agreement. We've only attached the Southern one. Uh the, the Northeast will reflect the same language on that, but um uh we just wanted to keep it a little bit short, and then the I G A that's, that's set up there is uh the same one that we discussed um Friday during our meeting. So um we do still have the language in for um uh for in indemnification, as we discussed last Friday, and um so we're hoping, uh we've received indicators from their attorneys that we're on the right track, and we are looking forward to unfortunately not having an agreement for you today to sign, but to um hopefully if we need to hold another short special meeting this week to, to get everything underway and um get the transition to uh Marl County Health District for these two ASAs as soon as possible.
Okay. Any questions about this?
No, so basically, this is just more of an update, you know, actually, of course.
Yeah, I was hoping for a contract. I'd mentioned the contract, so I figured I needed to give an update, because I didn't.
So I, I have a question on section five, right subsidy remedies. So I was confused with the maximum annual operations initiatives with post overhead subsidy. Uh so if you go to, if you go four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars paid quarterly, that's one point seven million dollars. Correct.
So, yeah, so it's four twenty-five annually. So it's separate. So it's separated out to the one.
Quarterly. So when you say quarterly, it's within the contract of the five years?
Yes.
Okay, now I understand.
Yeah, yeah. So we're paying. Uh, a hundred, a hundred and change each quarter, more twenty-five for the first year with adjustments based on C P I. And, and a true up at the end of each year.
Cause and when I read it, it says four twenty-five paid quarterly in advance. I'm thinking that's quarterly annual. Instead of one twenty-five.
Yes, and um, we made one change of uh, an annual subsidy. Uh, overhead annual subsidy. Oh, the maximum annual operations administrative overhead subsidy of four twenty-five. So the annual amounts four twenty-five, we're paying a quarterly.
Quarterly, okay, right.
I just.
Each quarter. It just caught me as four twenty-five quarterly. Like, that's a lot of money.
A lot more than that. That would be for both.
Yeah. Even more for even.
Yes. Um, so this is, yeah.
This is just for the South. Yes, okay, understood. Thank you.
Good. Any further questions about?
Um, and then I guess I'd go back to the same one on the I G A, cause it shows Morrow County Public Health. It doesn't show Morrow County Public Health, it shows Morrow County Health Department in section two of the I G A. And this gets real confusing because we're talking about Morrow County Health District and Morrow County. Public Health as the Health District and or. Yeah, Health Department and Health District. So in section two. I will make that change and then add allegations to Health District. So if, if they sign tonight, they, we don't have to go back and change it again. Okay, thank you.
And these are changing back. Okay, thank you for that update. Any other questions?
Yeah, I might have one more.
Okay.
Don't try to find section four.
On the I G A or contract?
On the I G A.
Okay.
It seems ambiguous to the plan. Not the non-interference. I just, I guess it struck me as. Kind of going against what we're trying to do with the A S A. With what it says.
The last paragraph?
Yes.
Okay. And lastly, this agreement does not apply to the twenty twenty-four Morrow County Ambulance Service Ordinance and Ambulance Service Plan.
So I just, I'm concerned with they're working together, but we're separating it to where it seems like they want it, somebody wants that to be. Separate. So which one do you go by? Because they are ambiguous to each other.
So what, what this is, is the non-interference says we will look to support and not uh, uh, you know, not to advocate for dissolution or. Or uh, you know, withdraw territories for the Health District. Uh, but uh, this was language that uh, our council, Bob Blackmore, put in, making sure that. If we made a change in direction on the, on our provider status, that this doesn't impact this I G A. So that's this, that's what he's saying, that this is not applying.
I just need the clarification.
Yes. So this I G A doesn't lock us into the Health District, uh. You know, if they're providing a good job, we'll continue with them, but it's not a violation if, if for some reason we need to part ways uh mutually or, or what. So, okay.
Yeah, I, I, I thought I had one more. It was about the five-year re-up. I had a question on that.
Um, the language on that within the contract.
Was that on the, was that in the contract? I might have done.
Yes.
That's why I can't, let me go back to that. So yeah, it said something about, after the first five years, if the county and. The provider agreed that they would just, uh, if they both agreed that they would just. Automatically go to another five years. And I had a question, what if somebody else was interested? In being an A S A provider? Does that not allow them to do that? I'm sorry, I didn't write that one down. Should have.
Let's see, I'm looking at the I G A, sorry. Yes, um. Thirty-eight? Renewal agreement. Um. Yeah, so we need to know ninety days before the expiration of the term if they'd like to continue. And this would more or less get to coincide with the ambulance service plan language where uh, providers or uh. Or the county can uh provide ninety days notice if there's, if they're looking for a change. Uh, so this contract's for ninety days. If there's another provider who's, who's willing to come or desires to cover these two at that time. Uh, that would go before the A S A Advisory Committee, which then would give a, a uh. You know, recommendation to the uh, to the board commissioners. What we'd ask to do is if that comes about, we'd want to make sure that it's. It's well before that ninety days, so either party can respond and, and give notification as necessary.
Okay, so I'm gonna take a guess here and I think what Junior's probably really asking, this language doesn't preclude somebody else from bidding on a service territory. Five years from now.
Yes.
No, that's.
No.
Cause it does sound like if they decide and we say it's okay that we can just supersede. Statute and just go through with another five years automatically is how it kind of appeared to me when I read it.
You, you do have that, uh, that flexibility?
Even if, even if another, even if another proposal came in for the, for the area. Well, um, so that's what, that's why I'm asking is I think if somebody else puts in a proposal for the area, that it should come to the board and they should have to. They should have to take that into consideration and not just be able to bypass that.
Yeah, I definitely, I mean, if, if the proposal comes in within the timeframe, I mean, generally with the A S A Advisory Committee. If they get a proposal, they can say, well, you know, we've got a, this is under contract for, and until the five-year contract's over.
Right, and that's my concern.
And then if we got another one right before that five-year contract, then they could bring that to the commission and say, here's this, these, this is how it weighs out. We recommend that we open it up for a change, or we recommend continuing with the current providers to maintain that. So that's where that advisory committee would. Would flesh out and provide that recommendation to the B L C. I think the easy way is if someone submitted in the next six months, we'd say, no, we've got four and a half years.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
No, I agree with that. It was the second five years.
And at the same time, if we have that one come through, then we can just say we're gonna renew for, or continue for another five years.
As long as that option is there.
Yes, I was making sure of that.
That's all I have.
Yeah, very well. All right, thanks. Thank you, Matt, for that update. Okay, um, next up would be five D update and consideration for Circuit Courthouse, yes, Matt?
Yes, um, I've got my name down here. We've been working uh, over the last three months, uh, our design team on the. Uh, environmental and the geotechnical reports. I did not include the full reports. I think it's about a three hundred page document. Uh, since you don't have to approve it, we've. I didn't include it in this packet. You already have enough good reading. Uh, we do have Doug Earl here, um, and um. If you'd like to come up, Doug, please, um, with Alliance, our project managers. Um, to kind of walk through and discuss what the report uh said for the environmental and the geotechnical. Uh, aspects of it, so.
All right.
Doug?
Thanks, Matt. Good, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, you guys have this uh, letter uh, in your uh, packet, I believe. Kind of walked through it. So several months ago, uh, there was a discussion about alternate sites. We came back to you guys with the, I don't know, there's six or seven various sites. It was chewed on and. And this south Kinzu site was at that point deemed, I think, the most promising, if you will. And so you instructed us to uh, dig into it and get some information and come back. Well, it took a little bit of time, but. This is that information on what we refer to as the, the south Kinzu Mill Site. And so uh, with the preliminary reports done, uh, what this shows is potential costs. To both move forward with this site and uh, potential over X. Uh, of the construction site, cost-wise, what that would mean uh, for this project. And so uh, with sixteen thousand cubic yards. The uh, fill, the cut and fill, and obviously that fill is more expensive because it would have to be placed in layers and compacted. Uh, is estimated to cost an initial, you know, one point five million dollars.
And that doesn't include our. Extra time of not getting into construction.
Correct, so. This is just dealing with the environmental and, and conditions that we found so far. Certainly based on what was found, it is recommended that we would move on if, if we still want to explore this site, that we move on to a phase two. Uh, environmental study. They believe based on some other information, there's potential leaching in the soil. And if uh, they want to do borings, nine morings to either confirm or, or ascertain the uh, the factual information in that. If there was uh, environmental concerns based on that, that soil would have to be remediated, uh, placed somewhere. Obviously, that's additional cost. It's not even attempted to be represented in this report. Uh, so, so I guess based on all this, and you're welcome to, you know, please ask questions. The uh, question from the design team moving forward is, based on what we've. Found preliminary. Do you uh, want us to continue to explore this site or uh, is there other directed, relative?
I'm highly concerned with continuing.
Yeah, I, I understand continuing with this side. I mean.
Yeah.
What we've done, it's already opened up a big can of worms and moving forward, I just think that the can of worms is gonna get bigger.
Yeah, it's not gonna get better. It's gonna get worse at best, so.
Go text it.
With that being said. Well, uh, going forward, which way?
Well, I think that it. There's discussing the letter that we got from. Judge Daniel, yesterday afternoon.
Um. Let's see, Matt, do you want to, you want to review Judge Hill's?
Yeah, would you like me to read it or just kind of?
Uh, just kind of give a summary.
So um, Judge Hill, of course, um, since this is the Circuit Courthouse, is that it?
So since, you know, this issue is quite of interest to people, at some point, would that letter be available for the public to view on their website or something?
Yes, in its entirety. We can post this on the website and of course it'd be attached for the minutes. Uh, we did receive this yesterday afternoon. Uh, about four forty-five on this one. Um, Judge Hill had asked, uh, to reach out to me and just asking for an update on the. On the building status. Um, I gave him a very summarized uh, review of what we just heard that we might have to excavate. Up to ten feet in certain areas on the, throughout that whole site. And that, that would add at least one point five million dollars plus additional. Uh, fifty to sixty thousand dollars in the phase two studies plus whatever's uncovered in those two. Um, with that, he has in the past advocated for. An approach which would maintain the circuit court in the historic courthouse. But um, put an annex building in, in Boardman. His approach was. Uh, something similar to how the county courthouse in Umatilla is located in Pendleton. But they have what's officially called a court, a courthouse annex or a court annex in Hermiston. Um. He um, in his letter, uh, he wants to maintain the historic courthouse down in Hepner. Uh, but acknowledges that about eighty percent of the north end, uh, you know, eighty percent of the, the hearings that they have. Occur in the north end, and he'd like to uh, have an annex that would be available for there, that would be built to be able to handle the jury trials as well. And so that's one of the challenges we have at the historic uh. A courthouse is we don't have the, the jury room and conference rooms that, that facilitate that and they pretty much take care. Uh, when they have a jury trial, will pretty much dominate all of our uh, public gathering spaces in, in, in Hepner. Um, so what um. What he's looking at is that we maintain that courthouse. Uh, provided an annex in Boardman, which would be able to cover eighty percent of the civil and ninety percent of the criminal cases. Uh, that arise on the north end. And um. That, and. He says that it's to access to justice, a strategic goal for the chief justice would suggest the court needs a presence in the north. This does not remotely negate the need to provide circuit court services in the south. Um, so he's uh, he's acknowledging that with the geographical um. Realities of the, of the county, that, you know, we, we should likely have two. We do that with our justice court. Um, and we have one just right over here in Aragon, and then they help hold cases down there. So he's asking, um, he doesn't put a definitive. The building needs to be here, but uh, in Boardman, but he is asking that the Board of Commissioners consider this. As, as a possibility to maintain the court's presence in Hepner and the historic nature of that. But also putting uh, putting the new building where it could be adapted to address the needs of, of. You know, justice availability, uh, as well as potentially. Maybe being incorporated into other facility needs that, that the county has on the north end, including our, our public he- uh, the health department. Um, there, I mixed both of them there for you, sorry. So he's asking that, that we should consider that. Uh, he feels the, the, the location, the mill site is just um. A bit of a black hole. That's not represented in here, but he's just, he's concerned that the costs will continue to uh spiral out of control. Uh, and he, and in his email, he did relay that the, the fairground site, while, you know, readily available and there. Um, he does acknowledge kind of the, the, the political and the, the, you know, the. The nearby neighbors not wanting it there and just doesn't feel like that's, that's worth the. Worth the investment and the development for the impacts that it would have on the community and other county events. When it doesn't address the, the, the presence of justice that the north end currently is lacking on. So he's asking that the commission, if they go away from the mill site. To please reconsider having an annex building in the north and maintaining the historic courthouse. Uh, as, as the primary location, but the volume would, would uh, be reduced a bit on, on that. Um, like I said, this came in very late. Sorry, didn't, I forgot to forward it to the two of you just in grade. Um. And, but that's what the Judge Hill is, has asked us to consider if we, if we look to move away from the mill site.
Uh, you guys wrote Judge Hill's letter and measure? Any questions on that?
Yeah, my question would be first, counsel. I'd just like to hear their thoughts.
Well, I mean, I guess it depends. I'll say there's different hats, just as the council, county council aspect. What I appreciate, which is kind of in the letter is kind of the back position I saw Judge Hill mentioning about the statute requirement. Mentioned statute to have courts needed in Hepner. I see a prior conversation was said almost again, that's like, oh, it doesn't have to be, you know, that aspect like. They represent, it is still kind of in here. So I appreciate that aspect. I think we're right. So I definitely appreciated that. Um, but. Yeah, this one, it is a unique change. This is not changed, but um, in addition, I don't think Matt can correct me if I'm wrong. When we're discussing about the courthouse, we're never assuming hate too, because we can't guarantee. Court staff, right? That they're gonna want to, that, that require them maybe to have to pay for additional court staffing. I'm still not sure in this, this discussion right here, the extent of service they're looking at doing on a north end annex building. Um, and if they compare it to Hermiston, uh, and even till county, but they are two fully functioning full.
They're separate.
Separate, but they're.
With the exception of maybe a couple of. Of bayless that might travel back and forth.
Correct, yeah, but they're, these are fully staffed.
Yes.
Full, and they have actually office admins, like there's the Pendleton admin, the Hermiston, you know, admin person there. And so they are fully staffed and running and. I'm sure that's a service for the people in Umatilla County, guarantee the folks in Hermiston for real is to go to Hermiston. You've built that distance. Um, if they're trying to do that, you're more, that'd be, that'd be impressive. I know they have a hard time filling. A job in Hepner, but that's also a south, you know, south Morrow County job. I can't compare saying, oh, well, they had a hard time in Hepner. It might be easy if I had jobs, more people work in Boardman possibly, but. I would do, would be interested to know if they're planning on having that fully staffed in the north end, wherever Boardman you're in, wherever. Or if it's gonna be used almost like a, an annex that's only used on certain days. Um, might make a huge difference, but I can imagine in my mind how the court functions sometimes. That they might have the staff more in Hepner at times, but then utilize that courtroom particularly on Thursdays and trials. They'll say, okay, well, we have our circuit court Thursday, we have our docket here. The judge can, will travel to Boardman, Aragon. We're gonna have all the pokes show up there and Judge Hill's correct. I would say eight or ninety percent of criminal. We're gonna have all the Pope show up there and Judge Hill's correct, I would say eighty or ninety percent of criminal cases. Uh, originate in the north end of the county, so those folks do travel down south to Boardman. And then, but then on the other days, would he, would the circuit court primarily still be in Hepner? And maybe this court staff in Hepner travels back and forth, so I just don't, I don't know that aspect.
Those are good. That's why I asked, you know, because of you knowing. It helps for insight on what it would entail. On the surface, it sounds like it might be a great idea, but there's always problems with every. New solution, right? I just want to know those problems.
I think another thing too, considering the access to justice point, I mean, like Justin mentioned, like the letter mentions is. Yeah, most of our cases originate out of the North County, and whether it's a civil case or criminal case. Someone's taking an hour out of their day to drive up there for probably fifteen minute hearing, and they're taking an hour to drive back. Um, I think on top of that too, just in terms of attorney availability, it's hard to get attorneys out to moral county. You know, it could be for civil cases, for criminal cases. I know the main hope defender drives all the way from Hermiston every Thursday. Um, so getting attorneys to represent people in moral county, I think that would be easier if those are at Boardman.
I would think the only, trying to, the um, you know, staffing aspect is the one. Uh, where location, and he mentioned joint. Um, placement like a, I think he in his letter mentions the health district, or not health, not health district.
Public health.
Public health, I I will learn to.
Thank you.
Public health offices being there. Um, which, you know, sounds good. I think the only way to remember for the financial aspect is those are not covered costs in their space.
Yeah.
Right? Um, and the other one is, I think when we were planning this courthouse. Even a new building, which was the idea, I think there was already the thought process of. Like, I'm pretty sure other departments have already looked at my office area like, all right, we're gonna put a person there, or put this apartment here. And you know, they already have the place lined up probably, so that kind of, yeah, yeah, they already have, they probably measured it, have it all planned out. So that may change. It doesn't reduce the staff. Space, right? So I'm pretty sure our office will be the same. Would not be, yeah, because even the office that Greg uses currently, she's a small temporary when he's there a few days. Most of our folks probably still stay the same, I imagine, if you could change, but. So we'd have additional office space in the northern. We might free up, maybe if it's in a new court building, from here, that would may free up. The two offices or space we have here, right? That makes sense. But I can't guarantee would change any, probably in the south, southern of the county.
So then my next question would be, is there any issue with funding? If it's not gonna be the actual courthouse and now it's an annex, is that gonna change how the state? Approves funding for such a courthouse? Right, is that if the funding is for a circuit courthouse, not an annex?
Yes, and um. Uh, that's a question I haven't I haven't broached. I wouldn't, I wouldn't turn to Doug to ask that.
Right.
Because uh and quite honestly, that would be a question for Judge Hill. Uh, since it's through them, it's it's his justification. If we were to entertain that option. Uh, I would, I would recommend that we pull Judge Hill in for a little workshop, make sure what his. His utilization is, we'd have to go back and do a bit of, well, we'd have to redo our space plan. And design on that, so we'd take a couple steps back.
I would say that he does seem to have the ear of the chief justice and uh. Typically, you know, is pretty spot on about how that plays out and works, so how does that affect you?
You might obviously it's gonna affect you adversely.
Well, it not not necessarily adversely, it lengthens the 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 projects, so to speak, uh. Change gears, you know, is it annex, an actual courthouse that we're calling an annex, and so we take. Most of the same planning uh that's been done so far and. I decided Boardman somewhere and place it there and move on. That that's not dramatic. So maybe it's semantics. It's a real courthouse, but we call it the annex because the real courthouse has to reside in Hepner, so to speak. You know, that's certainly not anything that the design team is concerned about that way.
And as far as the current design, our our idea down south was to incorporate our uh our justice court into it. That would be taken out because we have the courthouse down south and we have a facility here and there, and I wouldn't imagine having three justice courts. Um, and uh then that that percentage of the building either gets reduced. Or we put in, you know, the juvenile group or something like that. Uh, that would still facilitate being easily located by the by the court. The idea of creating additional office space um. For public uh for public health. As he mentioned in here, we're in a bad building there. We are looking at it in our capital improvement plan. We're not ready to pull the trigger on here. I can't imagine us incorporating that in this design, but maybe getting. A campus where we could have that building built in the future, right, by it. And, you know, use shared parking and that to reduce some costs and, um, but and just having a small campus there.
But but back to your question, you know, certainly I I work as an owner's representative for you. So whatever you guys decide, that's what I'll go do. Uh, pull the design team aside and say, listen, here's the new direction or here's where we're headed with this. That's. You know, it's up to you guys to tell me what you want to do.
Only time I was gonna make two was um for the Hermison, I believe the Stafford Hansel government center there. Was probably also utilized state funding. I think, well, I remember looking at this over the two different levels were. It's almost like they're data term like, are you building a new building? We're modeling, and those are kind of price differences. This is still a new building, might be determining annex, but as Judge Hill, I think, says in his letter. They never called the Hermiston an annex. They still like a. Hermison can say still courthouse. I would note Herm- Umatilla County for a long time, I think, has been the only one. That I could understand it happens, like truly fully functional courthouses in the state. Um, so it's not abnormal for the judicial district. It'd be the same judicial district, and the same thing here and have it to and. Um, to a moral county. It's interesting to see how he does it, because in Hermison, in Umatilla County. They are both pretty equally utilized quite a bit. Um. Yeah, the two, the two courtrooms in Hermiston, three in Pendleton. I'm also wondering, now I think about it. But even till county talked about two here, but I thought when they were building their new courthouse, that they're they're in the process trying to get one also in Umatilla County. How about they were looking at combining them all into one, but maybe I'm mistaken. Maybe they're still thinking about keeping Hermiston separate, but. Pull it off topic, but just I mentioned that.
Interesting.
So. Our our alternate for down south was the fairgrounds. Um, it would be easy. I mean, we've we've got the studies, everything can be just transposed right there. If we'd like to pursue that option. If the commission would like to consider uh. Judge Hill's request, I would recommend us scheduling a workshop. Where we can have him come and come in. He he had court day, or he would have came and and represented himself. He did say that. Um, and we we set a a work session where we can sit, uh pull Doug and possibly. Uh, our architect in here just to have some discussions on that if if the commission would want to consider Judge Hill's request.
Well, I think that we should because it is a partnership with the state. They are paying fifty percent of the cost of the courthouse part of the building. You know, and if you're giving them what they want. If there's any additions or extra expenses, they're a lot more willing to go advocate with the legislature and appropriate dollars for it. And, you know, as you say, the. Access to justice or whatever term it is that they use, with eighty to ninety percent of the cases being in the north end. And then if you look at, you know, for the jury trials being up there and stuff. About sixty-eight percent of the potential jurors reside in the north end of the county.
Definitely something we can do. I mean, I'm concerned about additional uh facility costs. I mean, that's that's one thing that. The states build us these nice facilities and we have to take care of the operations, maintenance for going forward. Um. Uh, so, I mean, but I root, I mean, to. Kind of go back on Justin's things, I really would like to see what his vision for staffing uh utilization. Um, and I was looking forward to getting that second floor back in the historic courthouse, but um. I mean, it is courthouse, so if we wanted to keep maintaining that as such, uh we'll look in other directions.
I'll get my opinion. I want to stay in Hepner. I would go back to the fair on the site. That's my opinion. And so. I think it's up to you guys. If you wanna have, I mean, that's just my opinion. I'm not, I haven't changed it.
Well, here's what I'll say. We gave the, we gave the mill site, you know, and we had our concerns beginning and they came to fruition as we were afraid they would. So we gave that site uh a chance, and I'm gonna say that we should at least have a work session to hear. All of Judge Dan Hill's. Concerns or or comments and if it's actually something that we can do before we even consider. Uh, I've been in favor of the of the fairground site all the time, so. It's kind of right that, but this is some compelling, some compelling. Uh, comments here to to consider, so I think we should at least consider it.
Well, this is, this project is all about left or left turns. Um, this is another one. Um, and we could facilitate that. I could reach out to Judge Hill, letting him know that the. Commission would like to meet, if that's the direction you'd like to give. Um, and see if what his availability is the next week or two, and if that's, if that's what the commission decides.
Yeah, I think we need a motion on it, whatever we're gonna do, so.
So I'll move to read how a work session is dredged and held to. Hear what his ideas are for north annex. And I'll second that.
We start to make some good discussion.
So my further discussion would be if if this becomes a link of actual viable consideration, would we hold another public hearing? Uh, public meetings, sorry. Um, we could. Would you prefer to have a public? Meeting?
No, his uh, I appreciate his letter and I appreciate what he's doing, but. I I think, I don't think you can split the baby. I think it needs to be in one place, and I think it needs to be in Hepner. I've always said that from when I was running for office, so I haven't changed my mind. I haven't changed anything, so. Uh, no, I I I, I could tell, I mean. I like I said, I appreciate Judge Hill's efforts here. I just think it should be in Hepner at the mill site. Because, I mean, not the mill site, at the fairground, and I mean. We've, we've done our, how many sites have we looked at? I mean, we all know, you could total them up. We spent a bunch of money on the mill site. We have done. Uh, we've been over the top and. You know, and we've spent taxpayer payer money trying to make this work at the mill site. It's just not there. I mean, and so. Uh, anyway.
Yep, well, I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
I, yeah, okay, so. We've been moved for a second.
I second.
Oh, did you? Okay, so. Okay, um. All in favor?
I.
All opposed? I. Okay, most here.
Okay, can I ask a question? In preparation for that meeting, is there anything you'd like from the team, so to speak? I mean, I know you focus kind of on Judge Hill and his concerns, but is there anything else we can do in preparation for that that you'd like to see or hear?
How familiar are you with Boardman?
Not, however, I'm aware that in the previous discussion of Boardman. The the county owned site that was kind of considered sits in what some people thought was kind of an industrial area. And not attractive. So one of the things we could do is uh work with somebody and. Look at other available locations or sites, if that was helpful.
So I have a comment on that if I can. Um, there is a tract of land. I'm not sure who owns it, but it's by the city hall. And there's already a road in and a roundabout. It's a pretty. Centrally located, pretty nice piece of property that I think if it was gonna go in Boardman, that would be. Personally, it would be my preferred site, and I'm not even sure what it would take to get that, so. Or who wants to, you know, if we get to a land swap or whatever, but just that's, if it was gonna go into north. Moral County or Boardman specifically, that's the only place that I really see where it would fit as a. As a good center.
So we'll just, we'll try to track that down and get some information on that side and. And get effective.
And where your meeting. I'll re- reach out to the judge right after this meeting and I'll reach out to our design team. That will power.
Alright.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Maybe talking to you later. All right, next up is uh. E award crews funds in all kind of sheriff's office, Brian.
So, um. Few months ago, uh, the cres uh. Awarded a hundred thousand dollars to the moral county sheriff's office. Um, I'm here today to uh requesting approval. Uh, to move forward in uh spending, spending that hundred thousand dollars. Um, what we would like to do uh upon approval uh to move forward um is. We are in need of a fire uh firearms range within moral county. Um, it would benefit. Uh, the sheriff's office uh quite a bit financially and time uh within in timing. Uh, there's several things that I'm not necessarily educated on on the process because of the type of site it is, and we want to put. Um. Uh, a a building, a building out there, so I need to, uh, if we got approval, we would be moving forward with. Uh, there's a bid process. I don't remember the uh. The right letters for it, but I'm I'm would be working with Eric Imes uh. To uh to do that process because it has the building. I also need to visit with Tamara and planning. Um, because I believe that there's a permit or something there because. Uh, we're we're wanting to put uh a a building out there.
Um, just real quick, uh, location of the building, is it gonna be South County, Mid County?
It would be mid county, right off of Juniper. Uh, the land is already owned by moral county. Um, and it's an abandoned uh, a rock pit. Um, it it's ideal i- in our opinion, because three sides are already, I mean, they're like forty, fifty feet high. So we would only have to go in and level it. Uh, we have to clear it out and and level it and put some gravel in and put the building in, so. Um, the it. It's kind of halfway done i- in our opinion, because the three sides are already there. Um, that we don't have to dig down, uh, we don't have to build up. Uh, and but we're. We're estimating, uh, and again, these are estimated because we have not reached out for bids or. Or or anything else at this point. Um, we're estimating that that's gonna be around sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, and that's one of the projects that we would like to move forward with. The other project is, we have two search and rescue four wheelers that are over ten years old, and they are just worn out. Um, they just don't have the power and the torque. Um, when we need them up in the, on a search and rescue mission specifically uh in the winter, um, in the snow. Um, they just don't have the the power to get to do what we need. Uh, so we would like to uh trade those in and buy two new uh Polaris five seventies. Uh, with winches and a new trailer. Um, and we're estimating that to be a pro- uh maximum of thirty-five thousand. Which would take the full uh hundred thousand dollars. Um. Those are the two projects. I'm not sure what else to, I know that, you know, there's, we haven't done anything yet. This is estimated and. Doing some little bit of research on our own, uh, we have to follow, you know, we want to follow the procurement loss, and so there's the three bid process. For the four wheelers um in the trailer, but then the, you know, you go back to the shooting range and that's a whole new process, so it'll be a little bit of education on my part. Or a lot, uh, just because of the process that we'll have to follow there. But we didn't want to start anything um until we got some, a little bit of guidance and approval from from the board.
Like I said, Brian, well. Well, I don't know, a year ago, um. The border police department ripped and came to cres and asked for money to build a shooting range. Is this, is this a multi? Departmental or or office usage, or is it just the sheriff?
Well, it would be, it would be owned and operated by the by the county or by the sheriff's office. Um, it would be a private range. It would not. Uh, due to liability and other issues, um, I know it would be our high recommendation that we do not. Open it up to the public, but we could uh open it up to other law enforcement. Um, Umatilla. Police department uh has done something similar to that. Uh, they built a their own range and they have uh use agreements. Um, that are available for other law enforcement agencies.
Right.
So it wouldn't be exclusively, or it could be. It could be exclusively just for moral county or moral county sheriff's office, but we could look at opening. it could be exclusively just for Moro County or Moro County Sheriff's Office, but we could look at opening um and going to other law enforcement, allowing other law enforcement agencies.
That's what I was just asking, law enforcement. I wasn't necessarily talking about public and then it just, I remember the Boardman was looking through it.
Yes, and it would it would benefit Boardman, uh, or in my opinion, it would benefit Boardman Police Department as well because I believe currently they're they're having to travel all the way to uh Pendleton. Um, and Juniper Canyon is half that distance or even less than that.
Were you guys, what range do you guys use now?
We use, we go to Arlington.
And that's a public.
It is a public range, so that because there's a scheduling and, I mean, it it works and and we've been doing it, um, but it it is a public range.
I would be very interested in seeing some way to help the public in having a place to shoot as well. So for my from my aspect, it would be easier to process and proceed if it was gonna be somehow available to the public because there's lots of lots of people wanting, asking where they can go shoot legally.
Hmm, so my my.
And I understand, and I understand, I mean, I was I was involved with the last gun range and and it was closed down because of abuse, right? I I understand that.
Yeah, and that that's my only concern. Uh, I don't, i- if we could I'm not against having a public range or having it open to the public, you know, for specific hours. It it comes down to some logistic uh concerns of mine anyways, and that's would be if we're gonna open it up to the public, I feel like we should have it manned. But then we get into staffing issues and then we get into insurance issues and liability issues and I I don't have those answers um today anyways. Um, that 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 would definitely change the direction of the program or the of the project if we were going to try immediately to have it uh open to the public. I think that my recommendation, Commissioner, would be uh of course, you know, I would like to move forward with it, um, and in in looking into it. I I guess as a later date, uh, what it would take to get it opened, um, and that might become a a next year budget uh request uh or something to uh be able to open it up to the public. Um my concerns of uh building it now and then and opening it up to the public immediately would be, as as you're aware, uh, the the vandalism issue and where it's at, it's very, it's gonna be difficult enough to control and um, so opening, I guess that said enough about that.
So I guess then my next would be on kind of that, on what Dave said was perhaps the city of Boardman and the Moro County Sheriff's Department could pool money together from CRES funds because they have some as well and maybe be able to go forward with that indoor range like they wanted to do with that money. They were talking an indoor range that was voluntarily staffed which would be fairly easy to do according to them on weekends to allow public to shoot. So I just, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not saying this is the direction you need to go, but just maybe if there could be some colla- collaboration between the city of Boardman and the Sheriff's Department to maybe pool money and do something that would be worthy for the whole county and the public.
We could, um, my hesitation, I I would be more than um open to going and visiting with Boardman PD. Uh, if I remember correctly, the dollar amount on that was extremely high. It was like around two million dollars and we've got sixty five thousand. What's that? I'm sorry, two and a half? Um, okay, I I was unaware.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't know who, I mean, we've got paintings for a project like that, so.
Brian, uh, so hey, what's uh, how, describe the, is it uh only uh law enforcement access or public or?
No, sir, it's it's open to the public, um, and uh it's by donation, you know, um, but it it's an open range.
Yeah, would that be a model that you might use to look at to maybe do this one? I mean, because that one has seemed to be working, right? Or I mean, is it?
The, um, yes, and when it comes to uh building or uh, you know, putting what putting one in, that's kind of what we are doing is looking kind of at their model and their structure, the the usage, um. If we were going to do something, uh, I guess immediately open it to the public, I think we would need to find a new site.
Well, I'm not saying immediately, but if if you have a site, and I wasn't talking about the structure as a model, but the operation as a model, if you have, you know, if you if you have something that you don't know if it'll work, I always like to look at another place where it is working and say, okay, what makes it work over here? Can we borrow it? And then apply the same methods here, not not the structure, but
Okay.
How how is a public and and the and the sheriffs able to mix in at Arlington and work? What what do they do that, you see, just to explore different?
That that's the plan.
Yeah, and and then possibly they get open for the public, you know, give them a shot at it.
I I think that I know a public range is is needed within Moro County. I just would like to uh, it would be my suggestion that we make sure we do it right, so we all repeat what we had last time.
I think it helps public safety too, as people, you know, I mean, if you're packing a gun around, you could be able to.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely. So.
So I'm supportive of the idea, but what would be the ongoing budgetary impacts of, I mean, everything has an operational cost to maintain it.
If you're gonna keep it for the county only, you'd have to have fencing and lock gates.
So the fence and then, yes, we would, uh, the fence is already there. Um, the uh, there would be an ongoing cost. Um, and if if that's only if we're able to get power out there, um, otherwise, um it's a, Commissioner, that's a good question. I don't know if there would, what it would be if there would be, um because there's nothing out there that we we don't, you know, no one running water, no sewer, no, um. So I'm not, I I I would, I guess sitting here today, I would say it would be extremely minimal.
Possibly an outhouse. And yeah, or if we if we were able to do it. It runs along the road, but I don't know how hard it'd be to string it out there. When you if it and and if it's just used for the county and you need to do night shoots, you could probably just run lights on a generator, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, we have a couple of spotlights and that what we would, what we've done in the past and um, uh, so for the night shoots, um, the some of those questions as part of what we would be putting in the plan to see what it would cost, we, because I don't know.
Okay, any more questions of Brian? Ready?
No, um. I think that um, I'll speak for you guys, you can correct me. I think that we're probably in support of the the search and rescue ATBs moving forward. The shooting range, we aren't opposed to it, but maybe more information?
Yeah, I would agree with it.
It's again, you know, so I guess one way to phrase is we're giving the blessing to go forward and learn more about it to bring back exactly what it's gonna cost, what it's gonna look like. Yeah, would you guys agree with that?
Yeah, we would.
Yeah.
Yeah. Give me four, you're lighting up, it's a good motion.
Hmm, so I'll make two motions.
May may I ask a question?
Sure.
Just for clarification on my part, uh so specifically for the shooting range, um, so we're good to move forward with getting
What it's actually gonna cost, what it's gonna look like and all the details, you know, your best guess estimates of what the ongoing overhead is gonna do to operate this. I mean, everything has maintenance costs, no matter what it is. It's picking up garbage or whatever, you know, the cost of having an outhouse out there, the monthly charge for that, you know.
Alright, perfect, okay.
Yeah, and maybe we could even work with Steven or someone to kind of do a little mock-up of the actual areas so they can see what we're doing and be happy to work with you on that.
That'd be great.
So the first motion will be to um authorize the sheriff's office to move forward up to thirty five thousand dollars to replace two four wheelers and purchase a trailer for your search and rescue operations.
I'll second that.
Second, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
The next motion would be to authorize the sheriff's office and consultation with other staff as needed to look at what the shooting range costs and ongoing operation costs. And I'll say that.
Second, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Just want to be sure, you know, we're supportive of it.
Yes, well, honestly, that's what, that's all I was kind of for the range is what I mainly seeking for today. Anyways, was just so we can move forward. I didn't want to spend a bunch of time and money or while a bunch of time and getting all this information and then you're like, yeah, no, we're not, you know, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
That's a good idea. You like it that way.
Did we want to take action on the resolution or hold up on that? I don't have a resolution to amend the budget since this is not amputated in the budget.
I, oh, I missed that part, but so, yes, we don't have, we don't have a resolution number on it yet.
It is seventeen.
Seventeen, I can.
So I'll move to approve resolution R dash two zero two four dash seventeen, adjusting appropriations for the FY two zero two five budget is described there.
I'll second.
Then move the second for the discussion. Now, will this uh this approve the the entire expenditure?
It would adjust the budget to allow for spending of it, but under the direction of the previous motions, we'll be bringing information back to the commission.
It would be the whole hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, good, because then I will get a ticket.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the comments on Pine Gate Renewable Solar Project Draft Propose, Porter, Tamra, and Daisy.
So I would include myself on the board giving to all of her, and it could be doing business or kind of a little post here later. I'm staying behind this topic in my book.
I want to turn that.
So Daisy and I tag teamed this and, um you have processed a lot of letters that go to the Department of Energy Facility Siding Council. This is at the stage three or four with um her third time to provide comments on this particular project, the Sunstone Solar Project. Pine Gate Renewables is the owner. Um, I think most of the comments are fairly straightforward. Just wanted to highlight a couple. One, based on a previous request, we did not again request for this project funding for weed mitigation. And Corey is here. Unfortunately, the state um doesn't see that that is an appropriate use. Uh, we also in this letter reiterated your prior comments that we recognize the states in the first position to require compliance. We had an hour and a half meeting with FSEC yesterday and spent most of that time talking about weed mitigation and Corey was there also. Um, they have one full-time weed person for all the energy projects in Oregon. They just can't do it on their own. So, um, that's a point. Um, tomorrow night, Daisy and I are going to the FSEC meeting itself in our area in Hermiston. We're just gonna reinforce that. We might get some specific language from Corey, but but doing that work on a reimbursement basis and with a subcontractor, just isn't keeping up with the scale and um intensity of the development that we have, so we just acknowledge that. Um, we also included some comments, um, reiterating the need for a road use agreement um to have our emergency manager look at the fire prevention and mitigation plan. Um, in terms of housing impacts, um how's that really challenging? There is a standard, socioeconomic standard in the review that the Siding Council looks at. Um, every renewable energy project or every energy project we see says there's adequate housing and we always say there's not adequate housing, particularly when you're looking at hundreds if not thousands just in our county alone overlapping, so they do not have a cumulative effect standard.
So just real quick, do they have a mile radius? Because I know we were talking about Benton Franklin County is some of the some of the housing and people are gonna have to drive two hours a day on that or more. And that's not actually a feasible, although they do it every day to come to Boardman. Um, so it it has been done and they do, they will do it. But I understand, I just was curious if there was actually a mile radius that that they use for housing, because there isn't appropriate housing in Moro County, well, this.
I don't know what's the commuting. Yeah, I don't know what the commuting pattern is.
It's like three or miles.
Uh, one way?
Uh, yeah, their their radius for determining housing availability is about a mile. And that was an issue that I brought up with the developer early on too is that, uh, frankly, a lot of the um proposals or applications will say, oh, yeah, we're doing this great thing economically. We're giving you a huge economic benefit. We're creating all these jobs, all this local economic benefit. But it's not gonna impact housing. So it's like on the one hand, they're saying in one section of it, they're saying there's gonna be a hundred new jobs on the other, like in the other section, there's they're saying they're all coming from out of the area, so it's that inconsistency that bothers me to say, okay, are you impacting housing or is everyone gonna be commuting from Benton County? So it's.
Which creates then your traffic impacts.
Exactly.
Which is another issue.
Yeah, so it to me, it doesn't make sense that they're saying there's no housing impact, but there's a huge economic jobs benefit and there's very little traffic impact, so.
Lots of cherries and.
Exactly.
Yeah, I just wanted to be.
So it's, and going back a couple of years, even prior to when Pine Gate submitted their application to FSEC, they talked about housing. They also talked about the egg mitigation plan, which I'll touch on in a second. Um they agreed um to attend a meeting that I convened with all the small cities and said, hey, y'all, here's an opportunity to um, work with a developer, that's a project is a large project. I can't remember. It's like up to four hundred temporary workforce people. Um, um well, up to nine hundred fifty during peak construction and we have other work going on. So none of the cities um reacted at that time because um that this developer, like most renewable energy developers, they don't want to be in the housing business, right? But they said, we'll we'll do what we can, which could be some creative things like signing a lease agreement that says we'll lease up to how many RV spaces or rental units for a period of time. The city of Boardman is working directly with this developer though, um, in something similar to that, and they have been for the past several months, so that's very encouraging, but it's it's not a completed project and it's not a silver bullet, so, um in lieu of that, the FSEC staff in their um, their draft proposed order include a couple of conditions that require that they develop a temporary workforce housing plan. Plan is only as good as the plan, right? And then Daisy came up with also an idea that requires some housing reporting so that they'll report to us maybe during the first phase. Um, not exact addresses where people are living, but how they're getting to the job site and where those people are coming from, and then the opportunity to maybe pivot if um that's becoming overly burdensome.
Can we go back to weed mitigation? So I just want to understand, so FSEC says there doesn't need to be a goal exception to weed, is that what it is, or is it just weed mitigation period? Is that something we can contract with Pine Gate outside of? Can 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 we, can we make that a stipulation that in order for them to be in Moro County, they have to do weed mitigation without going through FSEC or having to have goal exceptions?
So so two things, it's not a goal exception directly for the weed mitigation, but if I'm tracking what you're saying. Um, they have a weed mitigation plan and once the the order is adopted, they're required to follow it. As a practical matter, that doesn't happen. And that's the conundrum that Corey is in. And when we previously said, could you just fund an FTE so we can do the monitoring for compliance? They said, no, that's our job, the state. And then we learned loud and clear yesterday, Matt was on the call, um we're shorthanded too. We can't really make that happen. Well, we could turn around and ask for whatever it is, Corey wants, like a supplemental contract to um for this project to have a person on site during the program to make sure they follow the weed mitigation.
And that was my, that's so that's my ask. Can we go around the state entities and do this just between the county and F or county and Pine Gate without going through FSEC or or ODEO or OD.
So, yeah, uh, Corey's we need more county weed supervisor. Uh, yes, that is negotiated with them or um let them know what they're in for, educate them on truly what they're getting into because that's also um one of the big problems is they don't know what they're getting into and what kind of lift it is and what kind of issues are created, problems, and what they're held to the standard that they have to abide by to take care of this, because these projects are so big, so massive. So, um so much devastation created in a short time that's irreversible. And to try to um stay on top of it just to keep it, you know. Just to keep it, you know, in check and not um, not create a disastrous situation. Um, is is a lot and they just don't, um, they just don't really get it or understand. And haven't seen anything like this, what they're dealing with. So that's, that's the issue. Yeah.
And Corey um, says it a lot better than I do, but um, the importance of the weed monitoring and abatement. During the construction project early on, playing catch up makes it almost impossible if you're waiting till.
And I've got that through reading all these. It's that first two years is imperative that you be on top of it.
And we, we can ask, we can add another sentence to this, again, saying, you know, given the importance of weed abatement. Particularly during the construction period, we'd request that they fund um. Uh, or have a contract with the person who's on site um, or fund directly with the county. And they have um, reasons why they might not want that, but we could ask it again in the letter. One, so there's, we can amend the letter they have as well, but one other thought we came up with is um. They are also asking for um, some tax abatement and. Um, Matt's, we're not involved with that, nor should we be. That's not really in the regulatory role, but um. The county could include a condition there that through that program, it's a. Stipulation that they would have this funding um, as part of that. So it's another way. It's not through the regulatory process, but it's through the. Incentive process to fund um, a person or allow Corey to contract with a third party person to do that.
So he can't go again.
Oh.
I was gonna grab you and not let you turn.
It's bad luck if I don't. Uh, I got a question on the uh, goal three.
Okay.
It's, I mean, I guess it doesn't, it sounds, maybe so, maybe I just can't get my head around this. It sounds a little contradictory to me. Uh, where it says, Moore County supports the department's recommendation and. The DPO that the Sunstone project meets applicable land use standards and should be granted exemption from statewide planning goal through. The next paragraph says, however, the county does not agree with the department's pleasing that. If the general economics benefits are not sufficient to justify the exemption. The applicant's agricultural mitigation plan is not sufficient to justify a grant. Is it just me or that I'm not?
I was confused reading that too.
Yeah, well, I just had to reread it again and I'm a planner, so it it is confusing and um. I I talked with their senior policy, permit writer person yesterday who was in and um, the diff. In a nutshell, where they're wanting to place this, um. They agree that the egg mitigation plan is is a good tool. Um, when Daisy and I met with Pine Gate the prior week, they wouldn't have even proposed egg mitigation. If 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 they had known that FSEC was including it in the place that they're including in. Which is too bad because it's a real benefit to us and um, we think that there's a place. For it to be included in two places. So under uh. Um, the appropriate administrative rule, chapter three, three, four, five, oh, two, two, um. One of the ways you can justify a goal three exception is, is it locationally dependent? Is it um. Are there not water resources? So it's not productive land. They don't want the egg mitigation plan to be the quid pro quo for approving a goal three exception. So the pay to play. And we um, acknowledged that early on and because what other developer couldn't come in and justify a goal three exception? Just, I'm just gonna give you a whole bunch of money. Um, and that's why the egg medication plan specifically is for offsetting. Mit um, impacts to agriculture. So we wouldn't say that the decision would turn on that particular issue. But that it's part of the justification. Um, we sort of feel that by taking it out and including it where they have. It sets a precedent, um, one that would cut the county out of a future egg mitigation program. Um, and they've already set a precedent in other counties for using economic benefit as a justification for a goal three exception. So it's a little bit wonky, the purpose and and honestly, we use Pine Gate's consulting team to help um. To help write that part of our letter just out of support for Pine Gate, cause they've been such good neighbors and have gone out of their way. Um, to do, to go above and beyond. If so, in a nutshell, if the egg mitigation plan was the only reason for justifying a goal three exception. We see where the county and the state wouldn't approve it, but it was one. So they, they're still recommending approval. But the specific location they have in their set of findings might set the stage so. Future developers are not as inclined to come up with an egg mitigation plan.
When you say they too, do you mean, does that say, I'm assuming they have a staff that makes recommendations to the full board?
Yes, yes, that's true.
Um, and the hearing is only twenty seven.
Right, yeah. It, I think it is on Zoom. We're, we're gonna go, cause it's local, but.
Any other questions? That must be that we.
Submit a fact that FSEC.
Yeah.
For the third time?
Uh, this is the third place in the process. So our third.
And I, I was just looking at the flow chart and it looks like we are down. Let's just, yeah, it's on there. So we've done notice of intent, public comment, project order, application, public information meeting. Draft post letter and we are now at the public hearing site.
Right, yeah, this is the letter.
Tomorrow night.
That's right. This is the letter for the draft.
For the draft, okay. That's, that's.
Right, that could.
Alright, well, I'll make a motion to approve the letter to submit to FSEC.
And move the second into the discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carried.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. Okay, uh, last item of business is G, Mental Health and Prediction Service Contract.
Thank you. Um, basically it's still for as long as I can remember, forever to um, Community Counseling Solutions. Uh, previously in moral county, individual health, been doing the addition of health services from our county. The county receives funding from the state. I, I'm sure if um, Kevin was here, he'd probably correct me by saying, I call it kind of pass through money, but it's not. It's the idea that. We get, we contracted the state, which we did back in February for the services. Um, they update some of the conditions and then we contract with community counseling many years back. Uh, more can be have a health. When counseling used to be a county department, if you went to county, that point, I think when they started doing. Um, other work with other counties, they started break off to a nonprofit. So again, they primarily have been our only provider here, what they've done for moral county. Now they. Work with Humantilla County, Gillum Sherman, other counties, including also services. We've done contracts with them. Um, cause every time we get the state contract, we usually contract to go CCS. Because sometimes the state conditions may change, what they're looking for, what they need to have done. So we do the contract with CCS every two years or so. Uh, previously in the past, we have done um, contracts and rely upon RFPs in the past saying, hey. Back, back, oh, it's in two thousand and seven. I forgot the exact year we did an RFP. We talked about how it's gonna be ongoing services of the county. I'm just trying to rely upon that. After talking to Kevin, I think also when he's gone through the audit process recently, he thought, you know, I think maybe we should, you know. I don't know, he wasn't as comfortable with that aspect, which is fair. He really delved into it. And so we should probably look at doing a sole source. We had a couple of me and Matt and Kevin. Meeting, he was more comfortable with the idea of going at this one, with a sole source. Process justification versus relying on the older RFP, with the understanding that we're planning on going back out for RFP. Probably at the end of this, is it next year sometime? Is that what it was? Matt tried to remember what it was.
There's been a little bit of snafu with the state switching from fiscal to annual to fiscal calendar years. And so this one would take us through June thirtieth of twenty twenty five.
Okay, and so that I did in being, I think we'll go back out to RFP process at that point. Um, see if there's any interest, I would just kind of clear it up and then maybe for that RFP, making it clear that's gonna be a longer range. We kind of were working off that in the past, but it's never been tested. It's never been tested prior RFP, if our interpretation was correct or not. And I think Kevin thought, hey, it's probably safer to do it this way. And I concur, I think it's correct. Um, as a part of that sole source procurement, um, there's usually a written justification. And so what we are here today is I presented more of a justification aspect. Um, in the memo and the motion, I think, which I have a little bit longer motion, you'll see in the item. To accept that as a justification, we can edit it right here. There's ones you don't like, I can take it out. You wanna add something, we can do that. I have a word document here. Uh, but this isn't the contract. We'll then post the notice, the sole source. And if there's any objections, we'll deal with those or talk about those. But if not, after the timeline, then we'll have the contract and bring it before the board for approval at that point. So this is not the contract at this stage. This is just if we're going forward to sole source, justifications, public notice next. I wish the motion dressed staff to follow the laws for the public notice and then coming in, bringing it back for a contract. Kind of what we've done a little bit. Not sole source, but we do certain public works projects in the past, where you bring in notice to intend to award and then that, like same type of idea. So I want to discuss it a little bit more since also it's different than what we've done in the past, or if you were commissioners previously, you probably saw it handled differently over the past two.
And we did have this on the agenda in February twenty twenty four and we did make a motion at that time.
Correct, and that was the contract, I think, between the county and the state.
Okay.
If I remember right, and that's the one where then the county is like, yep, we get the money and the state's like, here you go.
Yeah.
And now it's like, oh, now we gotta get providers.
Yeah, okay. We've done that part of it.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so we just.
And I'll say, we, we, the council has been doing the services still, right? They've been ongoing. We've, we've been trying to clean this up. No matter what, they have been performing them. Even under a prior one, this will both be posted back, cause I think the state one was all somewhat, since it was a little bit later too. Which I've gotten used to now. It seems like these contracts and the state ones get posted and back. It's like every contract, we've had like. Posted like nine months to a year before, it seems like, so it's a little bit odd.
One, one of the challenges that we have with this and several other counties around us have had, have a little bit different uh, contractual agreement with. Uh, with CCS, um, in that they, um. We have them as a contracted body. The other ones have them. What was it that Kevin described it as? And it creates a, it, they're like a sub recipient of it rather than.
Oh, yes, that's right, yeah.
And what, what that means is if we make them a sub recipient, then we're just kind of the pass through. Makes it a little bit easier that way, but uh, it makes a continual relationship that's a little bit harder to. Pull out of and it makes it so we're liable to audit all their records. Uh, which with the operations we're doing, we don't wanna do. And so Kevin's really of the mind that we need to keep them on a. Second basis, which does mean that occasionally we should put it out to RFP. I know Commissioner Ryan Holtz has been. Uh, champion of that and um, where we're halfway through this, this term, let's sole source it. And then um, you know, February, March, put out the intents of funding and award and see if we have anybody else come forward that we need to. Uh, review qualifications for.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, yeah, that was just more of a. We'll get it two different ways. I think Kevin thought this is the safer bet for RFP. I think in the past we have, I think it's alright to go with the other path we did, but. Going through the auditing and everything else and it made sense also to do the sole source right now.
Well, you know, just my comment is I agree with Jeff, like, you know, I can see it in this case, but I don't wanna make a habit out of it, you know? I think, you know, CCS does an excellent job for us, you know? But I wouldn't think, I wouldn't like to see us, just, you know, lining him up, you know, oh yeah, they seem okay. I want us to keep that option open. Not what you were. As you know, to do the RFP, but this is kind of a special case and they do an excellent job. We all know that, so.
Well, you know, when the time comes, that that was for very highly on the RFP, I'm confident of.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I just, I said, I, I don't wanna make it become a, a standard thing with the county. On everybody, so.
I'll make a motion to adopt the findings of fact and analysis in the August sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Sole source memo from County Council and authorize a sole source procurement contract with Community Counseling Solutions. County staff are directed to post public notices required by the Oregon by statutes and present a proposed contract. For consideration by the Marl County Department of Operations.
Second. We moved the second into the discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our business and we'll get up now. We'll start in our department reports. Sheriff's Office, Office Monthly Report. I think it's M or Brian, so.
We gotta get that changed.
Yeah, I keep giving them a hard time on.
Yeah.
Uh, good morning again, Brian Snyder, Under Sheriff, Model County Sheriff's Office. Uh, things at the sheriff's office is uh, kind of status quo from my last report. Um, the big things that we've got uh, staff wise is we have a deputy graduating the sixteen week. Uh, Police Academy next Friday. Um, so we're excited to get him back and start getting him training. And we have another one uh, graduating in October uh, for patrol. And then we are in the process currently at the, toward the end of the processes with two other, two new hires. Uh, one is a, a lateral, uh, has been out of law enforcement for a couple of years, but still is considered a lateral. Um, and so she, they have just a couple more things to do and hopefully we'll be. Uh, presenting a offer letter to uh, to that individual and then another one, we're just waiting for them to get their physical done. And so we could move forward with that. So that's kind of exciting. Uh, we also have. We have a few openings in dispatch, but we're in the same process with one applicant uh, waiting for the physical. Uh, to be completed and then hopefully we'll be offering and uh, sending out an offer letter to them as well. Uh, for uh, parole probation, they're fully staffed and up and running and doing well. Um. Which is great. Civil, uh, we are uh, fully staffed in, in the civil department, but we've had a. A few hiccups along the way that uh, we're working with uh, the county minister administrator and HR. Uh, one of our staff, her hus- their husband uh, was in a pretty traumatic car accident, so. Uh, she's not able to be at work full time and then um, because of being shorthanded in dispatch. We are uh, using our civil deputy, which is certified in dispatch, a little bit more in dispatch to uh, to fill in there. Due to the fact that they're short, excuse me, shorthanded. Um, the uh. OHV Park is up, or our OHV deputy is up and running and doing really well. And so now we're just hoping he stays. Um. He, he, he's done a great job so far this year, so. And then we were uh. Back in July, if you recall, we hired Dave Booney uh, as a full-time deputy, but for the marine position. Which we're able to fill fairly real quick, once that became a full-time position. And he's up and running in the marine program and uh, doing really well. And he's scheduled to go to the actual police academy in October. Of this year, so um. Paying any questions, I think that's about all I got.
What are the vacancies in dispatch at this moment?
Two, well, three, sorry, at this moment.
Three with one coming.
Yep, three with one coming.
Three with one coming, so. And then how about on your uh, deputy side?
Six.
Six, okay. I just wanted to be right on it. With two, with two coming in and possibly two more.
No, no.
So you've already counted those two.
Yeah, those two are at the academy, so they're, they're on the payroll.
So two coming in, so you're still down four.
Yes, sir.
Alright, that's nice one.
Yep.
Get, get the right numbers.
We're trying to get them filled.
No.
Well, we had, and we, we were excited a couple of months ago, we had a, an interview process and we had eight applicants. Uh, only four showed up and only one out of that applicant pool made it through the backgrounds. Well, they, let me, I, I need correction on that. Four of them made it to backgrounds. Three of them got. Denied fairly quick into the backgrounds. It shocked me that.
And they would apply to be a cop with that background?
Yes, sir. It's on the applicant that, you know, on the application process, you know, when you gotta have a valid driver's license and you can't be a convicted felon.
Pretty high standard.
That was our opinion until. They interviewed really well. It was sad, cause they did interview very well. Um, and we were excited, you know, like, oh, they interviewed well and.
They understand the law.
Yeah.
That should be the best one, I'm gonna say.
Yeah, anyways, so, yeah, that's why we do what we do, so.
Thanks.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, appreciate it. Okay, next up is our weed department for the report, Corey. Okay, next up is our weed department quarterly report, Corey.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, Corey Sweeney, Morro County, weed supervisor, and my, uh, my report here starts with the end of May, after last quarterly meeting, so this quarter. Uh, it's, it's a pretty robust, uh, report. I'll just highlight on, on a few of the big topics for the month to make this flow a little easier. In May, uh, one of the topics was met with Oregon Department of Energy regard regarding a, uh, the Oregon Department of Energy discussing a FTE, uh, and, and more help with weed and weed mitigation. And we talked about this, um, because just in the last I want to say it was ten months, Odo has hired on another to help with this weed mitigation and, and, and these issues out here with energy. Uh, hired on a halftime consultant with Haline Aldrich. They, they brought one on and then brought another one on with Big Ramus, who's local. And also hired a full-time Odo person, um, Ash Woods, Ashwood. So three of them came on board just in the last ten months because, you know, uh, we're seeing a lot of influx in the county and, and also around the state. Uh, so they've, they've they've broadened up a little bit with, uh, some hiring and we talked about, uh, when B two H comes along and, um, Sunstone about, you know, another FTE for that, like, let's like, we, we already don't have enough with what we got, what are we gonna do for the future, so, um, so we did not come to a conclusion other than yes, when time comes and he's come on board, we, we definitely have to look at something. Increase hours, get these half time on full time, or wha- whatever we need to do, we're gonna try to do it, but it's, it's tough to find those people. So we, so we moved on and, and, and we're continuing that discussion. We just, as Cameron put it, had another discussion last week.
And is Bing full time?
Bing is, is part time.
He's part time, okay.
Part time, but he's, and he's just covering one certain area, one certain aspect.
Yeah.
One certain program, if you will. And then I'm helping out too, so it, it, it's like a full-time job, but uh, there's not a full-time job.
Right.
Full-time hours, I should say, on that run, um. So moving into June, uh, that mostly consisted of, uh, meetings and contract spraying. That's almost all I did in June was, was meetings and contract spraying. Now, there was a few um, in-betweens that I did with the revised, uh, verbiage regarding Wheat Ridge East Facility to the draft plan for Tetra Tech. Uh, they, uh, they just maybe thought it was, um, too broad on some of the verbiage or what to take care of, and we kind of narrowed that down to specifics, worked with them on that, um. Also, I went out for procurement regarding the new spray apparatus for the Dodge, so, uh,
Yeah. Narrowly, it's like as long as you're on Wheat Ridge use.
Yeah, yeah.
You were talking to who?
Um, so I was talking to Tetra Tech. So Tetra Tech is a contractor for Next Era, and Tetra Tech does the monitoring um, for their weeds and various other, um, vegetation sites and, and, um, other contractual work with botanists and, and stuff to keep them in compliance on these draft plans. So Tetra Tech reached out to me, uh, because they're, they went to a third-party consultant, which I'm assuming is a lawyer, but they wouldn't specify, asking for verbiage, uh, to be changed and, and the, in particular, verbiage was, uh, to possibly propose to eradicate weeds, um, so that they will basically like do their best, and I agreed to not to take out the possibility like that it will be done, but it will be to control instead of to eradicate, because eradicate is such a precise, um, you know, verbiage in that contract that they have to take care of every single, you know.
Control, control is more realistic.
Yeah, it's more realistic and, and, um, yeah, it is, um, it is better verbiage, so that's what we worked on, and that was that part of the.
I think, no, I think I mentioned to you when I was talking to Ryan. Uh, does that fit, how's that fit into this? Well, I'll tell, so Ryan was talking to me about our pilot program. Which is pretty well set up by the state, except we can add on and and we talked to him about weeds. And the staff gave me the figure on what FTE vehicle would cost, right? They proposed a hundred, and I told, and we came back at a hundred thirteen, and then I mentioned to them every year our employees get a raise, and so we've settled on a three percent increase every year. Is that still in the works, or, I mean, I have not seen back, he said he was gonna pass his the proposed pilot up the ladder to his superior. He said he sounded fine with it, but he had to clear it with his superiors now. Is that thinking in your mix on what you're gonna be doing here? If, if, we don't know yet if they're gonna approve that, but.
Right, yeah, and I'll know more after tomorrow's meeting. I have a meeting with him tomorrow, uh, to discuss that and, um, other things with, um, some other things going on. So we're gonna have a meeting about that. I'll know more about that tomorrow after our meeting, but yes, he, he he was in favor of that. He was, thinks that was a good idea, would like to see it. He was very, um, supportive of that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and, and realistically, um, it would help them out in the long run too, and save them money too.
Well, I would think so, yeah, what you're talking about.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Stuff they're proposing, so, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that, 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 that looks like that's gonna be a go.
Okay, I just want to make sure if you had heard something different from them or something.
Yeah, it, yeah, yeah, no.
Okay, so, alright, thanks.
Yeah. Um, so, yeah, went out for procurement with the spray apparatus. That is, uh, going off to get built here shortly, and then we'll have two, that, that truck, by the way, uh, anyway, it was pretty much rendered useless. It's just served its time out and it's, you know, it, it just, it wasn't functional anymore, so now we have two and we'll be good to go. Um, moving into July, um, was more meetings, um, and, and spraying, catch up, but, uh, the, the big takeaway from this month and was very consuming for July was, uh, beginning the Plumas Thistle, um, survey regarding the, uh, the OWEB grant from the state of Oregon. So OWEB dollars, these are Oregon lottery dollars that are in a grant. Um, it was, uh, it, it was time-consuming and, um, it was a lot of work, but I'm pleased to say that it was a huge success with that grant, um, because it was a ten thousand acre survey for Plumas Thistle, which I attached a picture uh, in there, but it, it had escaped, um, and we did a ten thousand acre survey. Two thousand acres burnt up, so we were able to get to eight thousand that were out there, and, uh, if it hadn't been for that survey, we hadn't, we wouldn't have caught the other site, so um, over a mile away off into another canyon, there was a Plumas Thistle that had, that had grown and was beginning to flower, and, and we caught that to, to stop it. There's twenty plants that we took care of at the site, they were bagged, dug up, bagged, and sprayed all around, um, to try to completely eliminate that, because it was it's such a rare weed. And, uh, it was number two on this year's priority list for the state of Oregon. This grant was, came in number two, it's their highest priority, so.
Do we know where it came from?
Uh, with Oregon Department of Ag speculates that maybe, uh, one of those cloud bursts from, uh, like Canada came down or something. Uh, because in the summer, as you know, the moisture goes up on those humid days and, and those seeds are microscopic, you can't even see it, but they just think one fell from however long way in a cloud burst, and then, and then there is that, and, um.
I was just curious, I know birds can, migration of birds can also carry that.
Yes, yeah. And I believe that the reason it got over into the next canyon is because of the deer. Where this, this was, it was just thick with deer and bedding, yeah, um. I think one day, it was awful, we pulled like thirty ticks off us from all the deer, and that deer, I think the deer attracted uh, seed over into the next canyon, and then if we hadn't caught that, if we hadn't had this grant and not caught that, um, there would have been twenty next year and then two hundred.
So it spreads this like Russian thistles too.
Yeah, and Oregon Department of Ag put it this way, it's like told me, like, look at this, this, this would be like somebody in the nineteen hundreds finding, um, a juniper tree and taking care of it and all the ones around it. And not having any juniper in this country or in Oregon. It says, it's a very big deal, this was.
Well, I'm glad you found them, took care of them.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, it was, it was good, it was worth, uh, worth the time put in, and it, it was a huge success.
So on the, just a quick question on the Russian thistle, is that, is that, do you guys regulate Russian thistle overgrowth?
Uh.
On private property?
We, we do when it, when it's called our attention, like, wow, yeah, when somebody says something about brings it up, we, we do.
And I see that you do a lot with the Army Corps of Engineers, so there is some, there is some, some properties that are very adjacent to Army Corps of Ace's properties that are becoming an issue with Russian.
Russian thistle, yes, yeah.
And I can talk to you after the meeting.
Sure, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Um, so moving on into August here, uh, met with human resources on, uh, regarding a future FTE. So, uh, up there in my report, I don't know if you noticed or not, but I accepted two weeks' notice of our second halftime spray applicator, so we had one, it, it was not cut out for him, he did not, it just wasn't. Um, he didn't feel comfortable with it, went out for another second halftime, got that guy in place, it was kind of too much, um, work for him, so that was two, so we came back to the table and, and we, we talked about maybe looking at a full-time, because we might be able to get in a full-time, so, so uh, we, we talked about that quite a bit, what that would look like, how we can get there, and, uh, and, and we're moving forward with that, so I'll have more to update that on my next, um, my next report. Um, and then I worked on the Regional Conservation Partnership Program, that's a RCPP grant, so this is kind of a big, uh, big deal right now, um, so two years ago, I attended a meeting and it was in Porvalis, and they had, uh, doomsday scenario of the state of Oregon and what could happen with, um, with these weeds in Morro County, the South Morro County was, it was in LIDAR imagery with red, and it was solid bank, almost purple, and it, uh, it, it was the worst spot in the state. And, uh, and then fast forward to this year, and their, like, nightmare scenario came true. Everything that they had, like, it, it, it was just like a picture-perfect map of where that fire was today, and they knew it was gonna be an issue, and we have to do something about this, and the federal government knew it was an issue, and so they, um, threw a lot of money, or, or thrown a lot of money, so, at this problem, um. And so, as you know, I've been working on the, uh, the annual grass project for about eighteen months for Morro County. Because we tried to do something in our NRS, in our CS, and, uh, a program out there for forty to fifty thousand acres, quarter share cost program for the, for the, uh, landowner. And try to take care of that, and, um, not everybody signed up for it, it's a, still a quarter to be paid for. Uh, and, and that money's not, it's there, but that grant money is not getting used, so now it went into the, the, um, from equip grant to looking at this, uh, regional conserve, uh, conservation program grant, so the RCPP grant is like two counties combined. And, uh, Morro County looked at going in with Unitilla County on doing it. Well, I was approached from the county, like, you can go out for this grant, and with Grant County, because, or, excuse me, uh, Gillum County, a- and, and get this partnership in this grant, don't you? And I say, you need to ask for ten million dollars, and, and you'll get it, you'll get the ten million dollars. And, um, so I looked into that, but I didn't want to, like, step on NRCS and what they're doing, and I looked into it. So we had a mini work session and, um, with my director, Eric Times, and Kevin Ants Finance, and, and, and we, we did it, and it was gonna be yeah, it was going to be roughly like five hundred thousand dollars to the county for a year, for five years, so um, two and a half million dollars for the county, and in that work session, it was agreed that, that, yes, we can get it to the administrator, he can present VOC. And, but the VOC probably wouldn't go for it, because, uh, it just benefits certain, you know, cattlemen and ranchers, it doesn't benefit the whole county, just a certain amount of people, so we thought maybe we'd kick that back to NRCS and let them, you know, do it, well, still nothing's happening with this, so they bumped it up like, okay, you need to ask for fifteen million dollars. And now, uh, Grant County just got twenty-five million dollars for this grant, and now they're looking at, okay, we're gonna take away the cost share, like, it's just gonna be twenty-five million dollar grant, take care of your county, get it sprayed county line to county line, and, um, and so i- it's a very big grant, and it's to take care of, like, the weed issues that they saw coming two years ago, and what happened this year, and a lot of this in this grant would take care of that reseeding of everything that was burnt, it would take care of, uh, future, um, fire, you know, hazards a- and, um, take care of the weeds, the annual grasses, and basic grasses that, uh, that are just overtaking landowners.
So this isn't just for invasive species though, it's for poll control.
It's.
So even, even some of the indigenous grasses that are fire hazards would be mitigated, or is it just for?
So, no, w- w- with this application, it's a very expensive application once we're juved, so it, it leaves the annual native grasses. The natives are completely fine, it just kills the invasive.
So it's just invasive, goodness, that's what I wanted to clarify, so.
Yeah, and that's why it's so expensive.
Cause you have trouble when you start attacking indigenous grasses.
Yeah, absolutely.
Critters of any sort.
Yeah, so the big problem that everybody's facing, especially NRCS, because working with NRCS, like, why haven't you guys, you know, implement this? Why, why isn't it, and people are asking landowners and chemical companies, like, why isn't this going through? And their response is, well, we've had this job out for a year and a half and still haven't anybody applied for it, you know, and it's gonna take so many FTEs, it's gonna take three FTEs using to take care of this, you know, and.
Is this, is this part of, is mistletoe part of this? Cause I know when the forest, when the National Forestry came to us and they were, they were having a hard time controlling the mistletoe overgrowth, and they couldn't get people to go up and help, because it's a hand-to-hand combat with mistletoe, you can't.
Right.
You know, you, you can spray it, but you're literally on foot, you can't go in with equipment and spray it, so you're walking around spraying this stuff.
Yes.
And that's one of the invasive species that was, that is a big characteristic of the fire, fire hazard.
Yes, yeah, that, yes, uh, specifically, no, that's not in there as a treatment for this, for this program, this grant.
Yeah.
Uh, but they can't find anybody to implement this. The money's out there, the federal government knows it, and is throwing all sorts of money out, you know, and, and, um, it'd really be a shame to leave this on the table. The trouble is like, it, it's all paid for, um, I don't know how they're hamstrung, but like it, if they're trying to get free FTEs for this, and they're paying sixty-five thousand dollars, you're not gonna get somebody to apply for that, that's gonna be out of a job in five years when this program is over. Now, you throw six figures at it, you might get somebody, you'd probably get three people, get it and get it done, it, it's just a matter of implementing this, paying somebody to do it that, that'll, that'll sign up and do it, and then getting it done and getting the county taken care of, and getting this grant money.
Is this a seasonal spray, or is this an annual, does it go year-round? Are they just doing it seasonally?
No, it, it's seasonal spray, that, that would get paid for in part of this grant, so the, the applicators would get paid for, they'd do their part, these FTEs are so many monitoring, they have to go These FTEs are so many monitoring, they have to go out, take each place. They have to find out the sensitive. You know, wetlands, the, the riparian areas, they have to document all this. They have to assess. How much, they have to assess um who gets priority and uh implementation. A lot of groundwork, a lot of fieldwork. That's all in the spring, all the way through the summer. And then the application is uh heavy in the fall.
So qualifications. I'm sorry to get in the weeds here, not, not to be a punning at you.
Qualifications would be.
I mean, you have to be a botanist and know what you're, I mean, there's something that can teach you and you can go out and do.
Yes, you, uh, one of them has to be absolutely uh. Botanist and um experience a degree in agriculture would be perfect.
And you're gonna get that for sixty five thousand.
You, you won't touch it, no. And, and you, you'll need fieldmen and you'll need, it, it'll be at least three people. And then. An administrator, somebody to administrate that grant. Um, uh, basically just doing all the paperwork coordination. And filing and the reporting. So.
It's a big lift.
It, it's a big lift and the county would benefit immensely. I hope this goes through. It's just um. Honestly, the NRCS isn't doing much with it. They, they just, they're not. And that's kind of why it came onto my plate and. I don't know how we're gonna do it either. Like, there's a lot of coordination to get worked out, but it'd be a big benefit. Especially with the fires we had and taking care of those issues and, and getting everybody in the county sprayed. It'd be the whole county's wide sprayed with this application.
So one more question, I'll be done. Is this, does this, can it be incorporated or is it anyhow incorporated with the Ellis Vegetation Project?
Um.
Is that completely different?
It is not. It is different because that's all uh federal grant and this is all uh private land ownership. Yes, yeah. But it would benefit um the wildlife immensely.
Well, and Ellis, the Ellis vegetation actually has a lot to do with private land, right? I guess it's focusing on the pendulum area where those. Individuals have private property. So it isn't just national forestry. It's actually.
Right.
Gonna be that and, and the private lands.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and just one more thing. They're, like, they're finding that um the weighing calves in the fall on this treatment. Uh, you know, are coming in forty pounds heavier per calf. Because of all the biomass they're getting um from that native grass and, and no more, you know, that not a, the sheet grass. Then we just had rice, taking care of everything. So it's really cleaning up the county. So. I'll be in touch on that. You guys will be hearing more of this as we go. And so what else did I do? And I just, um. I worked on the road proposal for the road department spray applicator. So. We're looking at, um. We're looking at getting a road crew. Um employee licensed to spray weeds on the county roads. And so. This would be um. An employee getting his applicator's license, it'd be about four hundred hours probably a year. Uh, there's a thousand miles of roadways to be sprayed, not to mention the pits. Um, this is kind of going back to what it used to be. Um, like fifteen years ago and, and pre were two, were licensed off the road crew and then. Weed department, you know, sprayed. So there's, it's kind of going back, back that way. Um. Cause realistically, that, that's a huge contract and a lot. And, and even with halftime myself. Like we're not getting all the road sprayed the way they should be. Um, it just needs, yeah, we need more applicators. It's basically uh with contracts and the land department. So that's what we're looking at. Um, and um, and then. I've been working on the two thirteen Linden Way facility and that's. Pretty good. That's got that uh facility secured. Hartway moved in, um, a lot more space. Um, and it's gonna do well until we get the facility built in four years. So it's uh. Yeah, it's a big step up from where we're at now. Um, so.
Is that an annual contract?
It is.
For a year.
Three year, yeah, three year.
So we'll. So we'll be in the process of the new building.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And then. Uh, I had, I had a, I met with planning to discuss final comments regarding Sunstone Solar Project. This we touched on a little bit. Um. And I did, it's not on here, but I did have, they, I did have a meeting with Sunstone. Solar last week when they came out from uh New Mexico and California. We met in person at the weed department. And um. Went through the Noxious Weed Draft Plan, what um. What they could expect, what they were thinking and what it looked like. And we did talk about uh. Like a part time FTE, um. Looking at that, you, you know, and, and what might, um, what might that look like? And they uh. They were kind of understanding of it, but, but, but also not, they didn't want to, right? Just fund that. And I understand, you know, uh, but they also didn't like realize. A lot of what like, what's gonna take place and how, how big of a project this is with the ten thousand acres and. They were kind of surprised to find out that it was gonna be like maybe up to two hundred dollars an acre in weed. Control for that first couple of years, you know, we're looking at two million dollars on that. Ten thousand acre project, like it's gonna be a lot. And um. Contractors, you know, I was hoping they'd have a proposal in there for how they're gonna combat this and take care of it. And. Um, we, we discussed, I added the bio control in there into the Noxious Weed Draft Plan. We talked about that a little bit with, with the sheet grazing. Prescriptive sheet grazing and they're just not sure how they're gonna can, how they're gonna fully implement. That. And uh, so we talked about that quite a bit and um tried to come up with some ideas. And uh. Yeah, we'll just, we'll, we'll see how it plays out. It's, yeah. That was, that was our meeting last week. Um. And then met with Odo yesterday to discuss the BTAs and we were geez and. Sunstone projects and we did talk about uh FTEs and um. Camera just uh put it in black and white that, that, the, the, look, our, our Board of Commissioners. Understand the workload and, and the saying, you know, that this is, this is Odo's, this is your site certificate. You guys are ultimately responsible and that's how the county feels to take care of this, you know, and uh. She uh, she politely disagreed and their. Their uh. Their consultant, Haley and Aldrich, kind of put it in this text. It's like, well, look at uh. Like OSHA or the, you know, DEQ. They're, they'll see something, they'll, they'll send out, you know, they'll get an infraction or, you know, whatever. They'll find or whatever and take care of that. And like. And they were kind of saying, we're kind of the same way. If they're out of compliance or they're doing something, we'll, we'll get them. We'll, we'll make sure that they know that they're in violation of their certificate. Um. That's just kind of how the state.
Is it cheaper to pay the fine than to fix the problem though? I mean, that's one of the things.
Well, with energy companies, no, they really want to take care of the problem. They don't want to just pay the fine and move on. They don't. They, they have been. Uh, existing ones have been really good about like, yeah, this is, we understand, we're gonna do it, this is fine. And it's been going on good.
Good.
Um.
Well, Corey, so I'm trying to, when they say, if they see a problem. They don't get eyes out on it enough to see a problem.
Right, yes. No, that is, that is.
They're expecting you or something like you to give them the heads up.
Yes. Uh, yes.
One thing they did mention, and maybe I'm speaking out of line because I had to leave early. Uh, but if we're doing some of that enforcement that the state's supposed to be doing, we can build the state for that. And so that's something we need to continue to explore on that.
We, we can explore that, yeah.
Oh no.
And, and Odo, if Odo, um, if they. If they find them, that fine goes into the Oregon Journal Fund, like they don't see. So it's almost like it's gotta be maybe a county. Fine, but, but we, that, that's the whole. The whole goal here is to not, nobody get fined, take care of it. Because they can get fined and. But it's irreversible damage that we can never come back from when these issues get created. It's costing them tens of thousands. Well, actually hundreds of thousands of dollars on some of the stuff. So, um, yeah, the Oregon Department of Ag puts. Put to like two point four billion dollars for Noxious Weed Control in, in Moro County.
Oh, and just in Moro County?
Just Moro County every year, two point four billion that the whole county spends on. So, um, yeah, so it, it's a big deal and we've got to get it right. And that's, yeah. So that's kind of, that was their take on it, that, that we'll, we'll do the, yeah. So it's just, if everybody understands that there's problem and it needs, that like, there needs to be a, a person out there. For what I call like a weed energy coordinator for Moro County. It's just, you know, who's, who's gonna pay for it? That's, that's the, that's, that's what we're looking at. So.
I still think we should come up with something for, rather than, on a, on an individual basis of these companies is. When they come in, whether it's Tamra, if it's a contact. And we say upfront, this is what weeds are gonna cost you.
A blanket.
Whether we talked about acreages, it's not acreage, it's not millimeter, it's a. And I'll, you know, have a policy. We had a work session, but nothing came out of it. You know, so we can say to them, okay, so there's not this. Trying to, they play catch up later or this misunderstanding, you know, if you want to put in a five thousand acre. Solar farm, you're gonna need this much to take care of weeds, you know?
Yeah.
It'll be a real figure too, that you can say if you have to add another person, another truck, you know, it's something somewhere along that because. I said, I'm meeting with another, you know, in a couple of weeks with another energy company, you know, and. And Tamra can attest to that, they're putting out feelers all the time, you know? It sounds like wind just slowed down and solars are on this.
Yeah, and, and the solar is really one that could create some issues. Yeah, with, with mountain bake bridge and, and.
Just the difficulty of controlling the weeds already.
Extremely difficult.
Yeah, I mean, a wind tower is three hundred feet tall. You can walk underneath that. You can't get underneath that solar panel very easily.
Yes.
Well, I know, I had a guy that had lived in, back in Montana or somewhere and he said, well. Back there, they're putting the solar panels up high so sheep can graze on it. Have you heard about that?
I, I did. I, I reached out to them last year and tried to get their engineers to consider that, either underground or up high. And uh, they just said, well, it's, that's too expensive.
Yeah, that's what I heard. I talked to one of them, I said, I'll, I'll fix this.
They, they have to realize how much is being spent on these other entities.
Yeah.
See, this might be another thing where you say, okay, you know, if you could, would you, what would happen politically if you said, you want to build in Moro County? You gotta put a sheep pie. How high is a sheep?
Hon- honestly, I think they would go for it if, if they realized, like they had no clue that I, I said two hundred dollars an acre. Non might be light on that. And that is, that is, that's two million dollars a year just for that.
Well, it's like Sunstone. We're, we didn't tell them anything going in about weeds. We're playing catch up, correct?
Right.
Yeah, see, and that's, that's hard.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's hard to do, you know?
Yeah.
You know, either, and, and weigh it off, you know, okay, build them up or pay us, you know, pay us now or pay us later or whatever you want to put it. Not pay us, you have to pay for your construction costs, you know?
Yeah, yeah, a- and they just, they're so big, the projects are so big and, and even. Even they don't even know, I don't even, I mean, there's not, yeah.
You said, you said they, they're, that even the people, the developers are not even sure how big they are.
Yeah, I just had a meeting with them and they're like, with a few of them, they're like, we've never seen anything like this.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so I, yeah, we'll just keep. We'll just keep moving on and keep trying to negotiate and hopefully, yeah. We can get somewhere. So. That's, that's kind of my orderly report for last.
Very thorough.
Very much, yeah. Um, any other questions?
What's going on?
Okay. All right, well, I appreciate it. Yeah.
Thanks, Corey.
All right.
Good morning. You've already heard me speak, so I'll be brief. Um, um, it's always nice to work with Corey. Uh, we're getting there. Seems like we're getting there. So Matt and I have had a discussion about the fee schedule. So it might be another avenue. To get money upfront, which is the piece that Corey wants. So, um, anyways, so um. This is, I always submitted to you the third week of the month, but I'm primarily talking about the preceding month. But it's a little bit of overlap. So sorry to say that um our um young planning tech. Rockstar Landon moved on to greener pastures, can't compete with the co-op with those wages. I mean. It was like sixty percent more than I could match. Um, so unless we're gonna make him a. Planning director. Um, it's just, we just can't even compete. So, um, we did have a little fun. Um, like yesterday, we all wore hats and glasses and mustaches, doesn't this land in there? So anyway, um. Uh, plenty of work um on energy projects or earlier this, let's see, last week. We had a kickoff meeting for the Heritage Trail Plan. We had stakeholders, which were um the park districts. The two cities. We invited the federal agencies and um they couldn't show up. We did have one um. Um, member of the tribe there. Uh, actually the tribe couldn't show up, but somebody from ODOT did, because those are the underlying um agencies. Uh, I think that was a good meeting. We've had it over in Boardman. Some more to come. On page two of the update. Um, Stephen included some uh picture of his map showing. Um, an update he's doing to the energy section. Uh, the interpretive panel update, I was able to get Landon here to share that. Cause he did the heavy lifting on that project. Those panels are, we have those nice new panels. We're waiting for a couple of places. Uh, for the underlying landowners, got to find out where the port wants to place it, because they ripped out the old one when they did that nice new paving job on Marine Drive. And um, also waiting on Boardman Park District for one location. Uh, then Stephen and Landon and I are gonna have a work party sitting, come over on a Friday and help us replace those that we can. Um, Caitlin Kennedy is a great addition. She's been working on code enforcement. Sent out a batch of violation letters, which is our least preferred avenue, but sometimes you gotta do it. Um, and then with water work, um, the next. Uh, Water Advisory Committee, and that's the county committee, not the EPA uh research project. We may meet again on September ninth. Um, and we'll focus primarily on um. Policy and project recommendations. Last week or two weeks ago, Matt and Commissioner Drago. Drago and I met with another landowner who's interested in some county support for a recharge project. It's very promising when these. Individual landowners have the initiative to solve some of their own water problems. And that's what they're, this is really a water quantity issue for farm ground. Um, and I think that'll be on the docket next, next month. Um, the Love Guama, Lori and Matilla Basin Groundwater Management Area Project is still on hold. And we have a meeting scheduled.
The nineteenth of September.
Thank you.
That I will have to call in on a travel date. I will be traveling.
Okay.
If I can call it.
Okay. Yeah, and I'll, I'll show that as your backup, not to hear the governor's recommendation and um her staff. On moving that forward. The EPA grant, we've renamed it um after the communication workshop. And um, I think steering committee meeting number three, so it's now called the Moro Yumatilla County Drinking Water Roadmap. So it's. So it's not just an investigation, but it's a it's a path forward. I I think that works really well. Um, I've been working the past month of reviewing the communication plan, the draft communication plan and the draft data plan. We have a, um, a workshop on data with a whole bunch of state agencies and the consulting team on August twenty ninth, and we're gonna have that one in Hermiston, so since that's a by-county project, trying to have a couple of those meetings, um, anyway, for the next couple of years. Um, we're not quite ready to submit the Quality Assurance Protocol Plan, um, with EPA, but we'll have a meeting um, with them once we do. Um, page four, uh, is a picture of the Yumatilla County Fair, um, where the part of the communications team set up a booth, and we also had Alina Estrada, who's our Oregon High School, uh, student intern. She was at the fair several days and was able to talk to some English and Spanish speaking people about this project. People, um, are pretty informed. I I think people are more informed about the nitrate issue in general than they are about this research or the roadmap project. Um, but we got a handful of people who were willing to have their wells tested for purposes of the research project, so.
Okay.
A handful is better than not, so it was still pretty good. Um, Matt and I have talked about water funding and also with Chair Sykes about the Water Consortium. There are other funding sources out there, so when I do have time, I try to take a look at them. There's a couple of workshops coming up that I might attend, um, just looking in advance for water funding opportunities um, that are out there. As you know, we just wrapped up the natural hazard mitigation plan, need to make some edits, and that will be off the table. We had a meeting with a couple state agency people who have um, some ability to help with community wildfire protection plan, and I just learned, I think it was just last week. That is not on the same five-year timeframe. It's just a good idea, um, to have your wildfire protection plan updated. The time is actually good because a lot of people are thinking about wildfires right now.
Well, the in the E O C A that was in Sherman County, that was one of the main topics was the eastern region for the wildfire.
Those events that Department of Energy is. And did you, were you able to?
I wasn't able to go to that.
Okay, okay. Those will come our way, um, in October. And because they're automatically applied, I don't, I don't think my read on it that we have to adopt a plan or a map amendment, they're just applied directly. I do think it's gonna increase the workload for the building official where properties are within the overlay map, so that's a on my to-do list, is to coordinate with Glenn and see how, he probably already knows about it knowing Glenn, but just to coordinate on that part. We already have a standard for permits that we issue in the forest zone, but those wildfire maps are covering a lot more than just forested property.
Did the fire.
As did the fire.
Right, I mean, there was probably more grassland fire this year than there was forestry fire. So.
Good to know, okay. Um, Daisy submitted an application, um, to ODOT to update our transportation system plan. Um, the last it was updated in twenty twelve. I think last month, um, the board approved a agreement with ODOT to do an interchange area management plan study. And on that list of things for us to bring to the table is Commissioner Wayne Holt's topic about who pays for long-term maintenance and why is it only those industrial developments and not others? And, um, I I don't have the solution and have a few ideas, but it's definitely something I think that we could integrate into that interchange area, the I M working group. And because I have so many things going on, I'm gonna ask Daisy to really lead that. I'll probably come to a meeting. If the commissioner wants to sit in on that, we've got all the stakeholders at that intersection, Loves, the airport, the port, um, is it CPS, um, uh, AWS, because they have, they're proposing three different campuses that would come off of that intersection, so peak construction is gonna be a busy, busy intersection. Also, um, the Navy and.
How about the National Conservancy, Nature Conservancy?
I haven't thought about that.
Because they're great. They're there as well. Big, big tract of land of the nature conservancy.
And they use that. That's a great idea. Okay, I'll add it.
So, so, you know, the AWS and the construction and Bertrand Construction. Anybody looked at? Because, you know, through the NEAC, and I forget the timeframe, there's gonna be major construction on that overpass. I know, coming up to them in like the next couple of years. I don't remember exactly what the timeframe is, but it's like it's gonna be effectively shut down for portions of it.
Yeah.
For a period of time. I don't know if anybody's really thought that.
We should.
Just now. Right, I think coincides with the construction sites.
Yeah.
That could be a huge.
We share that informally. It's not part of our approval criteria, but we share that saying if you can't use that overpass, what shall, where, how are you getting there? Um, and I don't know.
I mean, the Farm Office, you can go down to, I guess it's Marty Myers now, which is Three Mile Canyon.
Yeah. Which way out of the way for a lot of people.
But, um, not everybody else can.
That's right. You'd need an easement to get through and.
Otherwise.
So what the impact will be is Wilson and Kuncy will be.
Yeah, Wilson and Kuncy is gonna be coming to Boardman down Main Street to Kuncy and.
Yeah, Eric Eric has talked to ODOT District Twelve a lot of times about that and ODOT and, or being Wilson and Kuncy are not ideal to handle interstate traffic, right? So I don't know what the workaround will be. Maybe keep it open, but one way or one lane on eastbound and westbound. I don't know. It's, um, I also included, um, I was able to attend the Western Planners Conference. Thank you for approving that. Um, I took some vacation time and drove um, with my husband. I got to be chauffeured. Um, it's a a really terrific con- conference. Uh, learned, um, a lot, um, how other states and other counties, um, approach planning, a lot of, lot of differences, but a lot of things in common, and I presented version two of water quality and land use planning, had a pretty good group, learned a lot. Um, one takeaway, this is mind-boggling, but, um, I spent some time with a, a city planner from Wyoming, and then somebody, they don't have the State Water Resources Department, they have the State Engineers Office, and you're supposed to file like our start card, but if you don't, there's no ramifications. So they also have some significant water quality issues from a variety of sources. You can imagine Butte has some water quality issues, and I listened to a housing session where the city is funding um, abatement from contamination from old mining, which came out of their general fund. Um, I asked them specifically if they're getting EPA or other funding for that. Um, the state is creating incentives for cities to develop water systems. One was up to sixty miles outside the city limits for potable water. It's a whole different approach to how they're handling water quality issues. So you can imagine the city and city planners and city engineers.
Your, your system for.
Can you imagine it costs a mile per well? But, I mean, it's mind-boggling, but some ranches and farms even drilling a new well aren't able to get it, so they wanna hook into a city system. So just, um, anyway, I think it's worthwhile for both the water stuff and other to, other things as well. Did you know Utah, eighty-nine percent of the land is federally owned in Utah?
Matt's fun, yes, I did. Fully aware.
Yeah.
That was not a lot.
And and one of the, one of the other fun facts is, um, there's a big push in Utah to put renewable energy on federal lands. We haven't seen that so much in Oregon, and it's a whole different um, you know, because of sovereign immunity, but private development, the local government still permits it. Ada County, Idaho did a tremendous presentation on solar permitting, and they have FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. We don't, so maybe that's a good thing, how ODOT handles it. Um, the Montana governor gave the opening keynote address. Really impressive individual. Um, I asked about his interactions with his counterparts in other western states, because they obviously develop a lot of non-renewable energy in Wyoming that provides firm, reliable power for everybody else, and he said it's it's actually getting better that other governors realize we can't probably rely a hundred percent on renewable, that we will be purchasing more energy from Wyoming. So, and the Wyoming, um, one of the Wyoming senators offices came, and they're really promoting housing on federal lands. I don't know what that would look like, because around here it's pretty remote. Anyway, just some fun tidbits that I pulled off the top of my head, but seems.
Just, um, giving an, uh, uh, update on the consortium, uh, Matt and I went to the court and presented to them, and Greg was there, so they were very receptive. They, uh, told us to move forward with the concept and to bring an I G A back to them, so I have, uh, got a meeting scheduled, Matt and I and Justin, uh, tomorrow to get it started on that I G A, and then that will be back to you guys to look at.
Nice.
And I'm thinking about having, um, a meeting with Lisa, you know, because she has some ideas, so maybe in on that, you know, and, um, you know, I I'm not sure, you might wanna be involved with that too, you know, that's kind of the nitty-gritty of how it's gonna work. Because I can see from our end anyway, I could, we said at the workshop, there's Matt and Tamra and Kevin are legal, are the main county drivers here, you know. Uh, of course, Matt with his administrative, Kevin with his financial abilities and the software he's got. Tamra with her connections, she's gonna be the funnel from G S I to take what they do and bring it to the consortium to begin actual construction projects, plus her knowledge and the port, uh, her knowledge with grants, and the port has good knowledge with grants too.
I think sure do.
Her connections with the state and the federal. So that's what I envision is kind of the more county team on this field, you know? Because that's what we bring to the table. The port has been doing infrastructure for fifteen years, you know, what, fifty or something? I mean, they've seen every project. They have that. We've never done anything like that. We don't have the personnel, the expertise, the background. They have all of it. So they'll be at the table and, uh, you know, and, uh, like I said, Tamra and her, she her close work with G S I plus her knowledge I just went over. So that's the way I kind of envision this thing shaping up. There again, focused totally on obtaining money and getting projects built, you know? That's the goal, so we still, we tell some government agencies, some busy, and I'm kind of getting redundant here what we have in our, I know in our work session, but you tell them, okay, your money is gonna go to this project. And we will have projects, hopefully from G S I, in the queue with this group, with costs attached. So, you know, be able to work, I don't know, if somebody, I don't know, there's a lot of things that I, it's got a lot of possibilities, I think. And it gives a lot of flexibility to me on how you, how we're gonna, how how you can handle funds and to me it does, I don't know, I might be wrong. Legal will probably tell me I'm different, I'm wrong, or Kevin or somebody, I don't know. But anyway, so that's what I'm envisioning here. So, uh, we'll have this meeting tomorrow, get the I G A kicked off and hopefully they get something worked up to for us and get it out, uh, not, and maybe get it out to every, all the guys, be, like I said, our kind of team and everyone and look it over and see, see what your thoughts are, and then, uh, meet with Lisa, get her thoughts, and if she wants Joe. There, uh, it's, uh, the meeting we had before with the port, when we, before we went to the, before we went to an open meeting, we had a pre-meeting with the with some of the port members and, uh, some of their staff too, which was really good, uh, you know? The engineers were there and Niff Devon was there, you know, the water guy.
He knows water.
He knows where I'd be dropping.
Yes, he does.
And so anyway, they were there, so I thought that was a really productive meeting, and so that's what that's a, I think it's moving right along.
Is Niff gonna be part of the consortium?
Well, that's what we're gonna, you know, like, we've got to talk about these and see which staff member, because I I see it as a board uh, with one elected and one staff, because we need the knowledge from the staff, you know?
And that's why I'm asking about Niff, because he's one of those that can keep getting in trouble by saying, we can do this one. He's gonna say, no, you can't, because he knows those.
But that'll be second. The port is gonna decide, because they'll pick their two people, we'll pick ours. I hope we pick Tamra, and then one of us is elected. Of course, Matt, so far, I don't know, he hasn't seen the job description yet, but is, 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 he hasn't said no to me yet.
We're here to get it done. We're here to get it done.
Yeah, I don't think everybody feels that way, because that's all it is about, it was just to get something going as far as actual construction. That's, that's the whole thing, you know? So anyway, I feel good about it, and we're gonna, we're gonna get the thing on the anvil tomorrow and start hammering out, so with the, with the turn, we'll see, hopefully we'll see something back, but so the I G A and I don't know if we need bylaws or not. The, the broadband has bylaws, I've been reviewing all those, kind of marking them out, be ready, so. But, uh, we'll have agreements, and, and anyway, that's kind of what that's it, so.
Yeah, me too. Thank you. It's, that's some really.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Matt and I have had, I don't, I don't even know if I included in here, but countless meetings about how we're going to do outreach with West Glen Neighborhood and also look for some funding, and you all saw the generous letter from Jeff Huntington from Governor Kotex's office about us wanting to, uh, they wanted the county to look at two grant opportunities, federal grant opportunities in particular. I submitted a pre-application for one. I think the deadline was last Thursday, at midnight. It was done, it didn't stay up that late, it was done way before then, but, um, that that would help us with that project in particular, because so many of these grant opportunities are for um, minority populations, you know, previously, you know, disadvantaged communities, so there, we're continuing on that. We also had a phone call with Nick DeCody, who's our grant writer of record. Uh, he's got his finger on the pulse of particularly water and wastewater funding, so, um, he'll keep an eye out, and there's a couple of um, opportunities, Business Oregon said I could attend for free. I think that's what they offer, is to look at infrastructure funding for water, so the target is really, um, water, not wastewater, um, just to have enough awareness about them that we could say, here, Nick, can you go write these grants? And then it could either be the county holding the funding or the consortium. So a lot of these pieces are falling into place, I think, pretty nicely.
And I think you got your hand on a lot of those things, and, you know, and we've been talking about where does the, uh, public outreach come into play. Myself, I'd like to see it before it gets to the consortium, and we're not sure how that's gonna work. Because I want, like I said, I wanna see, what I want, what I envision this of watching many organizations work over the years, both at my previous job and so forth, is that it, i- if you have projects queued up with a price tag, and that's all they've got, it, a lot of, of public and private respond to that, you know? And so you, you have those, G S I has them, you do your outreach, you do your vetting, and, uh, Mark Patton suggested that once we get them into the consortium, let the consortium do the, uh, prioritizing, because there may be funds available in the consortium that were given just on a general bit. Well, I mean, I go back to A W S, who gave broadband five hundred thousand dollars, and there wasn't any strings attached to it. Was it just, no? So if you had some, something like that, then you can, you know, work your, what if, say you have four pro- I don't even know what G S I's, I read their schedule several times, you know, there there is scope work, which has the dates in there, what their targets are, but, you know, I mean, just, just say you have four projects and you get them into the consortium, and the consortium, he says, well, leave them the opportunity to prioritize them, because then they can apply their funds that they might have appropriately. And then Nick Green also mentioned gap funding, be another lookout for that, you know? And I, you know, I don't know, I thought, well, anyway, there's a lot of things to think about.
For sure.
You know, I, I'm looking forward to your input on how to, how to do this type of thing, and, uh, I want you to look at that I G A.
Sure, well.
To make sure it accomplishes what, what we wanna do with this group, you know, so the guys of course will get it. I can send it to you beforehand, it'll be on, you know, I'll be looking at it.
Good, well, thank you very much.
Okay, next up is our Treasurers' Month Report, Jane, and she just always gives it the written. Council table, Gavin. Uh, I'm gonna qualify a minute reset. Missions reports. Okay. We're back. Oh, meeting after order, and we'll continue on with correspondence.
Just that letter.
Mission reports, Jeff, got anything?
Um, Monday I will be. Well, having you want your commissioner Dan Dorn from Umatilla County talking about the legislative. Or listening session or whatever they're calling it, transportation.
Thirty twenty, do you want?
And um, next Thursday, somewhere next Thursday, I'll go listen and see what they have to say. Learn more about it.
Appreciate you doing that since you're on NEAC.
Yeah, that's the right one.
Right, my lane, right?
Yeah, right in your lane, no, no pun intended.
Exactly.
Yeah. Uh, other than that, I don't think I have much to do.
That was one of the big topics with uh Senator Lynn Finley and the group of. Representatives, the senators, they do on the third Tuesday, it was all about the transportation, the fifty thirty twenties. It's in, it's in serious peril to go away and that's really gonna hurt cities and counties.
Yes.
What is?
The fifty thirty twenty, so that when the federal funding comes in for roads, fifty percent goes to the state, thirty percent to the counties and twenty percent to the cities. And the state would really like to change that ratio. And we're soon.
Yeah, and we need to fight hard to keep it where it is.
Not, yes.
Not, not looking to get more, just keeping the little bit we get.
I have seen the ads recently, but the news articles about ODOT's budget stuff, it's all kind of lining up.
And that's, they're trying to pull money from the cities and counties.
Well, part of ODOT's problem is is that certain money that they can't use for maintenance, it's new construction, like some of the federal dollars and so. So they're relying on gas tax, which is decreasing as, you know, the mandates for more fuel efficient vehicles. They use less fuel, the states push for electric vehicles. They don't buy any fuel.
Yeah.
And you know. The impact that they create on the roads is the same or more than.
More, cuz they're heavier.
Yeah, and the, you know, drometer of the rubber is more, so it creates more wear on the road, so.
Careful of your solutions, they create more problems.
So, you know. You know, I think that a lot of the ODOT wants to push for a um. Mileage use tax, like they do with trucks, but. P C.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we talked about all that. Um, it's. It's gonna be an ugly snake, but the head, we can cut the head off of it as quickly as we can if we, we have the ability to. So.
Yeah. I don't know. Anything else?
Yeah, I mean, we talked about wildfires, obviously, um, you know, and. You know, for being. For being the largest wildfire in the nation in the state of Oregon. We handled it pretty well. I mean, we really did. And we had a million acres of fire, wildfires.
This hour, can I?
Over a million, wow, over a million, yeah. And uh. Fortunately, I mean, there wasn't a lot of structural loss this time. We had, it was way worse when they had it in the valley, right? The, yeah, that, yeah, when it went to the valley, it's a lot more rural. Uh. People that got affected, we were. Marl County, very, very fortunate, very fortunate, very fortunate. So I appreciate everything, you know, the fire. Fighters did, the, we had firefighters that came from Australia, New Zealand. Um, a lot come down from Alaska. We had a lot here in Oregon that came down from Alaska down above, so, yeah. So. A lot of people came and helped, so. And it made a difference. In the past, I've seen these fires where they, they let them grow to a certain acre before they'll even let the foresters or the firefighters go out and fight them. And you know, when these took off, they kinda stood back at the beginning, but realized very quickly that that was not the right approach and. They were pretty uh proactive instead of reactive this time, so. It uh, made a difference. We're still gonna, we're gonna have issues for. Years to come with the cattle ranchers, cattle, you know, losing their grazing lands and fences that were damaged. Gonna be a lot of uh claims and. So we're far from over with it, but. And after last night, watching the lightning fly, I know there was a couple of fires that started up in the Pendleton area, cuz there was a lot of lightning. Uh, there was a code three evacuation in Yakima due to a fire. That was get out and get out now. That came across my phone. Really? Yeah, so. I'm not sure why. I came across my phone. I might have signed up for something I didn't want to and I went to these fire things.
Yeah, you got it super. Well, I got it too, so I got.
Well, you, you were in those, a lot of those same meetings. I did hear some good news about uh. Forestry trying to open things up quicker than December thirty first, which was their first, you know, they're gonna keep the forester, the Happy Ranger District, they'll keep the. Forests runs close till December thirty first. It's like, that doesn't even make sense. But it sounds like they're gonna be a little more realistic and, yeah, and whatnot, so.
So I think season should be okay.
Well, I mean, you know, it's, I don't, the, right now you can only be north of fifty three and east of three ninety five, so the full. Almost all the ranger district is still closed, so. So fifty three is the western route from Ukiah to Coal Mine Hill, and you can only be north of that road. So there was some people that went up Huckleberry picking, people that I'm aware of. That were up Huckleberry picking south of the road and they came in and told them they had to get out of there and that they were gonna start enforcing it. And it was a five thousand dollar fine. And up to a year in jail. Minimum, maximum is a nine thousand dollar fine and five years in jail. It's expensive to go berries. Yeah, well, yeah, we're hunting, right? I mean, there's people that are like, I'm just gonna go hunt, well. If they're gonna enforce it. I'm surprised the fish and wildlife doesn't. Come back on that a little bit, because I'm sure they're gonna lose a ton of money. And tags that weren't purchased because of the.
Well, I heard Wes looks driving their decision.
Well, they, I'm sure they are helping.
First thing, well, we just re-opened on that day.
So, anyway, so I mean, and I get part of it. I mean, the weather's bad for fires and. The more people you have in the mountains, the more, I mean, we know for every smart person, there's a few dumb people, so. They're gonna. Build a fire that they shouldn't build, you know, right? So. Well, most of the fires though, there was only a couple that were, that were actually manmade. Uh, most of the fires in Marl County were. Lightning strike fires and. So.
Anything else?
No, Guam stuff, we already went over all that.
I kinda gave my report when I started to tell them, so. On the water consortium, um. Went to fair. Sold rodeo programs for a little bit, cuz I want to talk to some of the ranchers, like you were saying. Some of them was, you know, like you said, it's gonna be.
Yeah, it's gonna be.
They're working out uh various workarounds, some of them is. Sell cattle back to the guy you heard about, so they give, they.
They, well, they work well together.
They do.
They're, they're their only support group.
Yeah.
Right, you know, that's, cuz they certainly aren't getting it from anybody else. They go sell the cattle. A dollar sixty six a pound on the hoof and it goes for fourteen ninety nine a pound at the store. Somebody's making money and they ate the cattle ranchers.
Yeah, I know.
Hmm. So.
Yeah, so then I went to a fat stock auction, I don't know what their dollar amount, but it was crowded. Got, there's a lot to talk, talked to a few ranchers and, you know, it was a good time to get out and circulate around, hear what they're saying, so, so. Fair, I don't know what the numbers are, but that's pretty good, you know, so did uh. Uh, went to the neighborhood center meeting yesterday, uh. They're looking for any kind of maybe a vehicle. Your grant or maybe a surplus, they need a van. To transport stuff around. They've been using their private vehicles, you know? So, we might keep an eye open to that, I won't see any chance for availability on that. Had a Capcom meeting Friday. And, oh, I try and I'll zoom it into that. Sunstone thing tomorrow.
That's the six o'clock, right?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Kinda want to drive over, but I don't think it will, so, um. Guess that's about it, yeah. So you got this meeting with this. The name of that, weird, weird name, yeah. Yeah. So talk to them, I don't know what about.
Battery storage. Battery storage.
Yeah, yeah, battery storage, that's what, that's in our website. No, and then Jeff explained to me that, yeah, it could be a viable business, stored all on the, sold on the hot market.
Battery storage is so short term.
Yes.
It's not a lot of uh. You don't, not a lot of resource for, I mean, storage, it's, doesn't last very long.
Yeah. Anyway, I guess that's about all I got. So. Anything else to come before the group? All right. All the meeting in the juror. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thanks, everyone on Zoom.